Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, April 9th, 2008. The City Council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Also, if you are unable to attend, you can watch us on Channel 35, or also go to www.lacity.org. We encourage your participation. In the first Friday of the month, we are in the San Fernando Valley at our Valley City Hall and encourage people to participate on those Fridays that we're there. It does take 10 members for a quorum. We are short just one. I would ask councilmembers Han, Reyes, or Weiss to please make their way down to the council chambers. Thank you, councilmembers Alacon, Cardenas, Weisar, Laban, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, and Zine for one more member, and we will be able to begin this meeting. Thank you. Good morning. We do now have a quorum. If we could ask the council chambers, individuals in the chambers, Mr. Zumadog, if you could please, we're beginning the meeting. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weisar, Laban, Parks, Perry, Rus, Nell Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. 10 members present in a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Yes. Mr. Smith moves, and Ms. Han seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Before beginning the regular gentleman and president, there's a request to continue two of the items, Items 28 and 32. The request is for one week, and the new date would be April 16th.
Without objection, those items will be continued until April 16th.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 4 are items noticed for public hearing. They are street lighting, district ordinances.
Colleagues, anyone wish to call Items 1 through 4 special? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you.
And the orders will go over for one week.
Thank you. In case we do have 12 members present, we can reconsider those potentially.
Next items are also items which public, uh, is noticed for public hearing, Items 5 through 10, and the recommendation for council action is to open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to April 30th.
That will be the order.
Last item in this section, Item Number 11, is a street vacation in Council District 9, and if there are no protests, the city engineer can be instructed to proceed with the vacation.
Do we need to take a vote on that item?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on Item Number 11, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, Items 12 through 26.
I know on Item 17, we do want to hold for a potential amendment. Yes, Ms. Han?
I'd like to call 14 special, please.
14. Mr. Rosendahl? Oh, sorry?
19.
19? Okay. Yes. Okay. So Items 12, 14, and 17, and 19 are being called special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll. Yes. I'm sorry? You want to call it special? Yes. Yes, we're now, Mr. Alacon, we're about ready to go, but he's now called them special. Items 15 and 16 will be called special. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the remainder of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
And Madam President, the order on Item Number 13 will go over.
Thank you.
The next items are items which public hearings have not been held, Items 27 through 47. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Thank you. It looks like we do have cards on some of those items, Madam Clerk, I think.
Yes, you have cards, I believe, on 30, 31, 33, 35, 36, 37, 39, and 40, and 28 and 32 have already been acted on.
35, 43.
Great. Okay. And 45 and 47, it looks like, as well? We have cards. Any other specials? Yes, Ms. Han, sorry.
Yes, oh, 35 has been called special?
Yes, it has by cards, but we'll also...
Okay, and how about 43?
Had not been called special.
Then let's do it.
Thank you. 36 had been called special by cards. We'll add your name, Mr. Zine. Ms. Rosendahl, was there? Okay. Any other specials, colleagues, on the remainder of the items? If not, um, Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Next items on the continuation agenda, Items 48 and 49 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Please call them special, Mr. Cardenas. Those will be called special.
And that would take council back to the items called special and public comment.
We will go to our public comments. If I could ask the following individuals to please come to the podium, Al Sabo, Joe Luera, followed by Barbara Rowe, and Deborah Burton. Please, yes.
Yes, my name is Al Sabo, and I live in the 9th District of the City of Los Angeles. I'm here today to ask that the, uh, two, uh, within the next two weeks that we see that the residential hotel ordinance comes to a vote and is passed in this council chambers. When we were at the most recent Housing Committee meeting, it was brought to the attention that this plan may cost the city $1 billion. What I found out to be true in doing a little investigation is that this is nothing more than hypothetical rhetoric to scare people. It's a scare tactic. The one thing that should be noted is that a similar measure to this has been on the books in the city of San Francisco for 30 years at this point in time, and during that period of time, the ordinance did exactly what it was supposed to do. It stopped people from converting residential hotels into condominiums and lofts. As evidence of this, during that 30-year period, only five hotels were converted in the city of San Francisco at a cost far less than $1 billion. Only a fraction of that cost, as a matter of fact. And as another matter of fact, if you pass this ordinance to preserve the residences of so many people, such as myself, on fixed incomes who need it, you'll actually be saving the city a lot of dollars, simply because we won't be forced to live on the streets, we won't be forced to have, go into other social service programs that the city is in dire need of right now. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Joe?
Good morning. My name is Joseph Luera. First, I want to say thank you for the lighting on Skid Row, but I think it's time to shed some real light on the real issues, and that's the ordinance that we need to have passed so we can get these homeless people off the streets and into some affordable housing. Today, we were going to show up with 100-plus people. We will be here next week with that, and hopefully more. But, um, I feel it's important that, uh, that ordinance is passed. You know, I live at the Alexandria, and I've, you know, I've seen a lot of changes take place there. And to me, it's important, as a member of this community, to see that the ordinance does get passed and that it's enforced, because the homeless issue is starting to get out of hand again. And, um, I'd really like to see the city council members vote and pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Rowe, followed by Deborah Burton, followed by Michael Hubman.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Rowe. I reside at the Alexandria Hotel. Forty years ago, a leader was killed by hatred. Today, in 2008, we have no, made no progress in housing across this city. We are now demanding that residential hotels be protected for the people that have no other choices as to where they can afford to live. I'm a grandmother of seven. I don't want the legacy of this city to be the fact that they have no place to live. There are other resources that are giving to things that are not needed. We need residential hotels. Today, I'm afraid that the elected powers will arrest the dreams that my grandchildren can have for housing, of their choice, of where they want to live, not to where they are told to live. The American dream can go forward. I urge this council members on this committee to add the amendments proposed by the committees to communities to support the ordinance in moving forward for the final vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deborah Burton?
Um, my name is Deborah Burton, and I am a member of the L.A. Cancer Organization. I live in the Ballaton Plaza in Council District 9. I have lived there since 2006. I am an organizer in the same community that I live in. As an organizer in a downtown community, I have seen the impact of the redevelopment process has had on our community members, my, my neighbors, the people who come into our organization seeking to preserve their housing. One day they have it, the next day it's gone, because of the redevelopment that's not only going on in the downtown community, but in the city of Los Angeles. Two years ago, a permanent, uh, a moratorium was passed to preserve the residential hotels. But, right now, we're at the close of that moratorium, and in the process, the city was supposed to write a permanent housing ordinance. We have been waiting for two weeks for this to be cleared up without the exemptions for residential hotels. There should be no breaks. If you give the developers a break, they will wiggle through and take advantage of that. We cannot give them the opportunity to take advantage of residential hotels. I have been looking around at my, my coworkers and my community members have been talking about this ordinance, and many of you are talking to each other but not listening to the impact that we are talking to you about. Our community is not just a downtown community, but a city community. We need your attention. We need you to hear what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Hubman, followed by Chuck Tenon, followed by Humberto Camacho.
Good morning. My name's Michael Hubman. I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist. And poor people, they need a break. Poor people need a place to live. For my part, today, I am going to pledge to encourage and assist at least 250 poor people from the city of Los Angeles to register to vote in time for the November election or sooner. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Chuck Tenon. Chuck Tenon, followed by Humberto Camacho, followed by Solidad Garcia.
Good morning, council members. President Gruel. This city needs to protect its business interests to ensure a healthy investment in its people. The city's supposed to be our economic engineer. I call your attention to today's daily news. Density bonus is targeted with a lawsuit. That's the ordinance that was passed by the city council. Thanks to Jane Ushers' suggestion of suing the city to get results, and thanks to Noel Weiss's expertise legal is challenging the city in this. The density bonus ordinance allows developers to build taller buildings if they include affordable units. They use this tactic with the city to get, get this, get their way by using the city. You look at the NoHo Gallery project. They make millions by allowing sub-minimal affordable housing, so they give up a quarter of a percent. What they give you in return is an affordable walk-in closet, if you can get one on the waiting list. And the empty buildings in the city, CD2, there's a lot of them. And also, I want to bring your attention to the closure of recreational parks. They passed the 080002-537, but you know what? State and local economic impact? $336 million, $307,000 in state and local tax revenue. And you know what? The impact of saltwater fishing, the retail sales were over $1 million. You know what's going to be affected? Losing $100 million in local economy and millions of dollars in city tax revenue. And you know what? The local city tax revenue in 2006 from this? $160 million. Add boating, $330 million. You know what? Pass a motion. Janet Han, you could come up with one to minimize the effect of the state closures of our offshore recreational parks.
Thank you very much. Humberto Camacho? Nice to see you.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Humberto Camacho, member of the Pico Union Neighborhood Council and also vice president of the Byzantine Latino Courts. I'm here to thank the council for giving us the pick and the, pick and the poke, and also to giving us the shaft on the question of water rates. Uh, Mr. Rosendahl, very excited, expressed his concern about the cables last time, and explosions are continuing to happen on the structure of the electrical power. Those cables are not going to be changed, as expressed from the W Department of Water and Power. They have all the priorities, and you have excessive power coming through the lines on the question of high electricity on the billboards that you have approved, also the excessive electrical lighting on, uh, uh, Staples Center. So beware of that, that your expectation of cables and our excessive rates that we are paying are not going to cover the problems that we're going to be facing today, tomorrow, and the after tomorrow. More electrical power is going to be, happen because those things are not changed, and they're, they're not going to be changed. If you have a guarantee that in six months you're going to change all those cables, then I won't complain over here, but you have given us a big increase on money. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Solidad Garcia, followed by Sky Anderson, followed by Matt Dowd.
Before she begins speaking, this, the item of the DWP rate increases is a matter on today's agenda.
Thank you.
Can, can I have a, ask a question, please, before I begin?
Please.
Don't, you know, put it back.
She's holding it.
Okay. Is there going to be a comment period for 15 and 16?
It will be dependent upon if the council member asks for a public hearing or not. That has not been determined yet.
Okay, okay, okay. In the meantime, public comment. I am Solidad Garcia, Chair of the Neighborhood Council's DWP Oversight Committee. The independent auditor reports from Barrington Wellesley and Huron Consulting were used to support the proposed DWP rate increases, and they say DWP does not establish salaries and wages using market studies, a common practice for, for almost all utilities. Last week, the L.A. Times said that our Commissioner, President Nick Batzouras, agreed with the critics who complained that too little of DWP's money had gone toward rebuilding electrical lines, and too much had gone toward high employee salaries. With the city about to make a decision on DWP rates today, it would make lots of sense that these increases are not diverted for wage increases. This year's IBEW contracts have a salary reopener. It's time to acknowledge DWP's extraordinary salaries and the pressure that this exerts on wage demands from the city's other unions, whose salaries are also not determined by market studies. LADWP has the honor of being the model union that other unions would love to follow and emulate. The city knows that the recent 23% wage salary raises has taken its toll on the city budget. Please do not cause financial consequences beyond these halls. Stay any decision to activate the Union Reopenor Contract Clause. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sky Anderson, followed by Matt Dowd, and followed by Zumadog.
I'm Sky Anderson. I'm a community activist. I've lived in Los Angeles for eight years. I want to tell the people at home, if you're watching and you have an issue like the gangs not being adequately addressed, come down here and speak to city council, because this is where the action is. Two, I walked in here and I filled out a form, and I didn't have a, I needed to make a check at the public comment section. I asked this police officer over here, Mr. Lopez, who had a pencil in his pocket, if he would let me his pencil. He says, "No." I says, "Why?" He says, "I choose not to." Is that public service? That's not what this talk's about. This talk is about the Hollywood Nickerbocker Hotel. It's a senior citizen hotel, and the owner, Mr. Goodrich, has owned this hotel and other hotels for years and made millions and millions of dollars off hood housing. But I've been 86 from that because the owner, that, the manager lied to me. I got angry about them lying to me. They got angry at me, and they said I couldn't live there. It's been going on for four years. Mr. Laban is the representative in that area. I was downtown last week, and I heard this person honked their horn real loud. I turned around, Mr. Laban was waving to me. He's a nice guy. But I must see if his staff can do something about the Hollywood Roosevelt Nickerbocker Hotel and the owner, Mr. Goodrich. He made millions and millions of dollars off senior citizens. He's about 80 years old now, and his whole outfit is selfish, selfish, selfish. Thank you.
Mr. Dowd? Mr. Dowd, followed by Mr. Zumadog.
He's already trying to push in on my public comment, Channel 35, set your VCR. Zumadog's back at City Hall. It's been a long time, but I brought him back because it's our anniversary. But that's not what I want to talk about. First problem I have today, I've got a new CD, a new single out, a new production. And I'll tell you why it's important to the city of Los Angeles, because there's a couple African-Americans play on this single, and I recorded this vocal track at least 12 months ago before the city introduced the symbolic moratorium on the N-word. So I've got this CD. It's got the N-word. I wonder if the city of Los Angeles is going to provide me with some stickers I can put on the front before I sell them? Some kind of warning that this, this contains symbolically banned language? So if someone can organize that for me, because it's a great song, and come and check it out. It's really got a good groove, beautiful guitar work. But unfortunately, they say the word about 20 times, but it really actually sounds good on this one. Next, I want to take my hat off today to the Shaw family. I'm not afraid to take my hat off to them for coming in here yesterday. Kevin James as well, he's on to it, talking about how the council aren't listening to the public comment. Well, look, see, here's my son. This is my son riding a motorbike. So I, I could never imagine I would be gutted if my son was shot, or killed, or murdered even, like how horrific for that family. So for council people to get up and talk, I should say the S-word, while those people are going through the most gut-wrenching time of their lives you could ever imagine. So wake up.
Mr. Zumadog, followed by Mr. Hunt.
Zumadog, back throw your ass in the 08. That was pretty short, y'all. Zumadog back, y'all. Problems already, y'all, ye, ye. Anyway, it's not good to be back, but we have some important things. First of all, I'd like to thank DWP head honcho, Mr. Nick Passatoras, who gave Zumadog an exclusive interview. They'll be posted on zumatimes.com. I know city council last week said that some of the fire, that there was a tragic firefighter who passed away in the line of duty, tragic event, and the city council tried to say it was due to aging infrastructure because you didn't have the money for this rate hike. Well, I just talked to the DWP head honcho. He said that the money being approved today will not be going to the infrastructure that y'all referred to. So very nice of you to throw that example under the bus. Also, I'd like to say, city council members, be very aware, the mayor of Los Angeles, Villarosa, very unhappy that you rejected his Las Lomas housing project. Thank you, Greg Smith, y'all. Thank you, Greg Smith. Yeah, yeah, he shut that down, y'all, and kicked it to the curb, y'all. Well, Mayor Antonio's not real happy about that, so all 15 council, all 14 council members should be looking for the mayor to try to replace Eric Garcetti as president with Mr. Herb Wesson. We hear word on the street that they'll be making a move to try to replace Garcetti with Herb Wesson. I support that, if that is the case, because the mayor wants his city council back, and that's my public speech, First Amendment, that's what I'm hearing on the speech, y'all. So, yeah, yeah, look for calls from the mayor for some arm twisting, y'all, because he doesn't like to get beat down in Las Lomas, y'all, ye, ye. Also, Las Vegas, I've been away for a while. Ed Reyes, I'd like a symbolic resolution to please tell Ed Reyes to take the stupid cobwebs out of his head. I've never seen an issue in two years that has had more community outrage trying to build a liquor arcade by a school. Thank you, Michael Carrione, and everybody. You should be ashamed of yourself, Ed Reyes. What's wrong with you?
The speaker should speak to the council.
I'd love to ask a question. Something is wrong with this project.
Madam President?
Miss? Ms. Zumadog, you're out of order. You are out of order. Out of order. That is your warning. Mr. Hunt?
My name is Heinrich Kiefer. I'm the immediate past president with the historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. And I only want to say to my colleagues on the council here that there were some many good recommendations made for oversight to the DWP rate increase issue, and I would encourage, encourage each one of you to take seriously those recommendations. Let's see if we can create some transparency and... Let's see if we can create some transparency in government. Let's see if we can work together. I'm willing to be a player with this, but we all need to come together and let's create this transparency so we can agree and get along. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Mr. Hunt here? If not, Dr. Dan Weisman.
That was polite. That was nice of her. Okay. First thing, welcome back, Zuma Dog. I now know how to get the attention of the council. Just put Zuma Dog up first. All right. First question. Which of you council members will put forth a proposal to open public comment on 15 and 16? Thank you very much. You know very well how diligently all of us have been coming to comment to you. You know very well how the real outreach, the real Oversight Committee for the Department of Water and Power is already here, no matter how many more Oversight Committees are created, made out of good old boys or people who are in various people's pockets. You need independence. You need to follow things that come before you. I brought us several questions, and I'm pleased with the answer to the first one. Second question, when will the city council create a mechanism for the council both hearing and responding effectively to public comment? Yes, some public comment is irrelevant, some of it's disrespectful, but much of it is respectful. And we now have the Brown Act, which requires you to listen to us, but as you know, many of you have other things that are on your mind and you don't. But I would wonder about an ombudsman idea, a program that will permit specific responses to the public comment. When are the specific plans to repair and upgrade our Department of Water and Power infrastructure, to renovate its procurement system, and to stop our manholes from exploding on us going to be coming forward so it'll be known? I know it's been requested. We haven't seen it yet. We'd like to see that. When will the council reconsider Amendment 6I that Mr. Rosendahl brought forward to reschedule the increases and avoid putting a 6% increase on our rate payers in June?
Thank you very much, Mr. Weisman. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I did indicate Dr. Weisman earlier. Arnold Sachs, followed by Katie Carlson. Mr. Sachs, and then Ms. Carlson.
Good morning, council members. Thank you. I'd like to comment on last week's DWP hearings. I'd like to thank Councilman Alacon for his efforts to promote the oversight for the low-income program that DWP has. But my concern is, if they already have this low-income program, why isn't their oversight already in place? So we need oversight on oversight. I'd also like to comment on, Councilman Garcetti mentioned that the DWP is giving away lightbulbs, two per house. Are these the lightbulbs that contain mercury? And if that's the case, what happens in two years when the lightbulb burn out and you have 10 million lightbulbs to dispose of in public waste? I'd also like to thank Mr. Zein for mentioning not to transfer the DWP funds, that we would find other belt-tightening alternatives. Yet when the mayor called for belt-tightening alternatives of $20 million, L.A. City Council came up with $95,000. That's a lot of belt-tightening. And finally, I'd like to thank Councilman Rosendahl for his stand regarding the infrastructure about the cables. It was mentioned that there was 12,000 miles of cables or 15,000 miles of cable. Is that the total number of cable in the city? Or is that a percentage of the cable in the city? It was mentioned that the cable is 60 years old. What is the life expectancy of the cable itself? It was also mentioned that they were asleep at the wheel. Recently, New York City had a case with a ferry pilot who was asleep, and it was a tragic accident. New York tried to get out of the impending lawsuit by saying they didn't know. I hope the firefighters' families sue the hell out of the city of L.A. and collect more money, make the penny price settlement seem like pennies because of the infrastructure being, not taken care of, the city council not looking into it, and the DWP's actions. Thank you for your time and your answers.
Katie Carlson, and we'll then go out to Sharon Brewer in the San Fernando Valley after Ms. Carlson.
My name is Katie Carlson. I'm Vice President of the Harbor Gateway South Neighborhood Council. I'd like to make the comment on the energy cost adjustments. We are all aware that LADWP holds the distinction of paying the highest wages and salaries in the United States. In comparative studies and Edison similar-like descriptors show that LADWP wages range from 15% to 40% higher. We are aware that the contract agreement with the union allows for a two-year salary reopeners. Therefore, we would ask that our elected representatives and appointed LADWP manager and board president not to divert rate payers' money so as to allow further wage increases. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go out to the San Fernando Valley, Ms. Sharon Brewer.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, public comment. I wanted to make a comment regarding yesterday's agenda item, number 11 and 12, the wetlands and parks in CD 9. Please don't look to parks to fix the gang problem. Parks can only help kids stay out of gangs if there are structured programs. The drawings shown yesterday of the wetlands and parks look like 80% wetlands, 10% grass, and 10% building. Where are the playgrounds, sports fields, et cetera, so kids have something to do, not just hang around? Also, council members want to have parks in their districts, but they fail to remember that parks require maintenance, staff, and security. Where is the money going to come from to pay for these people? Daily News, Friday, April 4, 2008, Page A3, LAPD says it is prepared for May Day rally. Planning, training should help officers avoid repeat of last year's troubles. Still coping with the fallout of last year's disastrous May Day immigration rights rally, LAPD's top brass said Thursday that they will use lessons they learned to better police this year's march. Question, why would the city allow another march this May when there are probably hundreds of pending lawsuits from last year? How can the city jeopardize the possible loss of money from city funds if things get out of control again? Not from LAPD, but from some of the public attending the march. Who's responsible for keeping the people attending the march from causing problems? The promoters, which they failed to do last year. What is this event going to cost the city in manpower and dollars? Thank you.
Thank you. Candido Merez, followed by Ira Coslow.
Thank you, Madam President. Point of information before we start, are we going to be allowed to speak on 1560? I know there was someone that...
Yes, Ms. Han is going to, we will have public comment.
Wonderful, thank you. Then I will just talk about the process and about representation. I just want to publicly, again, thank Soledad Garcia for your outstanding leadership in regard to the DWP Oversight Committee. Also, Dr. Weisman, Jack Humphries, and Mr. Daniel Benegas, Vegas, excuse me, Vegas, Viegas. Thank you very much. You've done an outstanding job. I've been here when the neighborhood council and the public hasn't been represented. When the DWP wages were before the council, there was no one here. Even though I was in favor of the wage, excuse me, the wages for DWP workers, there was nobody from the neighborhood council. So we thank you very much for being here. I also want to thank Mr. Alacon, Zein, and Han for, again, fighting to try to hold the line on the DWP rate increase. Last night, it was Mr. Smith, Mr. Zein, and Mr. Parks. So we do have some friends on the city council who are trying to watch out for the DWP rate increase. So again, thank you very much for that, and we'll see what happens when we talk about item 15 and 16 in a few moments.
Thank you. Mr. Coslow, and then Mr. Alacon. Mr. Coslow.
Hi. I'm here to talk about another item on the agenda, but while I'm here and taking off from work, I thought I'd mention something about the street furniture, something that the council should look at, the contract, as regards two specific items on there. One are the supposed information signs that are actually advertisements. Councilman Rosendahl in CD 11 has now been told he has to put five of these up on the oceanfront walk. People come to the beach to see the beach, not the signs. So I think it's completely ridiculous to put advertising on the beach that way. The second is the automatic pay toilets. We do need toilet facilities on the beach for tourists and mainly homeless people that are there. The answer is not the APTs. On March 25 of this year, the Seattle Public Utilities Commission completed a report. A recently completed found the unattended toilets have been well-used, both as they were intended and as a refuge for drug use and dealing, booze drinking, and prostitution. Some homeless people now avoid the toilets because of the social problems they attract, the report found. Meanwhile, there's been a steady increase on how much human waste crews clean each day in downtown alleys and walkways. The report by Seattle Public Utilities, you should look it up, also found the single-stall units required relatively large quantities of water while offering a tiny fraction of the service available in some traditional public bathrooms. We should open the bathrooms on the beach that exist. They have been closed all winter and because of various problems, which you should talk to Bureau of Public Building and Safety or Parks and Recs. Those are the toilets and bathrooms that we need, not these 24-hour whorehouses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment. Mr. Alacon, you wish to make a comment?
Because, Madam President and colleagues, I cannot let Mr. Dowd's comments go unresponded to. The fact is that Mr. Parks and I know better than Mr. Dowd what it's like to lose a child to a killing on the streets of Los Angeles. This council has real lives, and we've had real-life experiences, and we understand we're human beings. And that's exactly why I refuse, as the father of a son who was killed on the streets of Los Angeles, I refuse to let people come into this chamber and use, exploit the death of a young person to create racial divide in our community. And no dumb comments from a public commenter will stop me from standing up when it has to do with the death of a child.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 12, and that was called specially by Council Member Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, item number 12.
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to open up the public hearing on the Venice Walk. We've done this many times, and I'd like to have it one minute per speaker.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Then we'll open public comment, Bill Green Spade, or I'm sorry if I'm looking, Teresa Daitland.
Only a plaintiff.
Thank you.
Only one of the plaintiffs.
Hi, my name is...
Yeah, excuse me, one minute. I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Rosendahl.
Just read an opening comment on it.
Sure.
About the issue. Okay. And then what I thought also would make sense is have the departments come up and do their thing before the public speaks, so the public can hear what the whole interaction of the issue is and respond, in fact, to that, if you don't mind. Yeah. Yeah, we want, well, no, no, I want to do it after you hear the whole interaction so you know what's going on.
Okay.
I understand, but you'll get a chance for that. But let me start with my opening comment. Colleagues, this item before us this morning is about the ongoing struggle the city faces in managing, shall I say, opportunity, in managing a very delicate balancing act at Venice Beach. It is about several very difficult questions. How do we protect free speech and expression on the boardwalk while simultaneously restricting unwanted commercial activity? How do we maintain the historic character of Venice Beach, known for its funky performances, exciting, and interactive entertainers, while still respecting the need of adjacent residents to have quiet enjoyment of their homes? How do we craft an ordinance that passes legal muster without forcing police officers and Wren Park employees to become constitutional scholars? How do we provide order and mediate starkly competing interests without inadvertently regulating away the special chaotic spirit of Venice Beach? It's not chaotic as much as it's exciting and interactive. These are not easy or simple questions, which is why previous councils have wrestled with this issue and why, most likely, future councils may need to do it again. Mr. Labons knows this. He's been around that issue for a long time. But we are at a unique moment today. After the council was sued by multiple plaintiffs over the most recent version of this ordinance, a federal judge decided to guide the city, the plaintiffs, and any Venice Beach stakeholder who wanted to be heard through a year-long process of crafting a new ordinance that the judge says is likely to pass constitutional muster. The result of this process is before us today. This proposed ordinance is the result of dozens of court-supervised negotiation sessions, a town hall meeting in Venice, enormous community input, and extensive collaboration among the LAPD, the Office of City Attorney, the Departments of Wren Park, and my office. Let me be very clear. As much as I would like these issues to be resolved permanently, this ordinance does not resolve all of our problems or provide perfect answers to all of the questions we struggle with. There are several boardwalk cases pending against the city. This proposed ordinance will settle only one of them, the one brought by Carol Sobel on behalf of food, not bombs. But this ordinance is significant because with the court's guidance, it resolves the most important issues we face, the constitutional challenge. Every word in this ordinance was extensively debated in court. It has been drafted and redrafted. Venice residents, merchants, artists, performers, and advocates went to court and made suggestions that the judge accepted and included in this draft. And I would like to ask representatives of the City Attorney's Office, the Department of Wren Park, and the LAPD to come to the table to help us understand this proposed ordinance. And Madam President, if it's the community's desire to speak first for a minute and then hear the interaction, we could do that.
It's up to you, Mr. Rosendahl.
But I thought it would be smart to hear what they have to say, hear the questions before you react. I know you want to speak, but we'll let the one speak if it's okay, then we'll go to what I want to do.
That's fine.
Just the one, the rest, come on up to the table.
Maybe, yes, Mr. Labons.
Just to add to it, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for your leadership on this. We had this in committee. I think it's good to take the comment now and then come in with them and get the staff. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much for that. Okay, Matt, do your thing.
So we'll start then.
Two minutes.
No, one minute, Mr. Dowd. There's already been a public hearing on this item. One minute.
Okay, the first thing we learned from the federal judge is that it takes a federal judge to decide whether what you're doing is protected or not. That's half of the city's problem, is you go down to the beach and you act like judges, and some of these people do it too. And they judge people, and they're not judges. And we proved LAPD is not a good judge down there. We've proved it for 20 years. We've proved the Parks Department is not a good judge. Now, these attorneys just admitted in committee, Mark Brown and Mike Nagel, they're sitting right here, Channel 35. They've cost the city millions. They told the committee the other day that they've been following this case law for 25 years, and they still got shot down by us. So we followed the case law better than them, and I'll tell you why, because it's Ninth Circuit law. Now, you've got this new ordinance with zones, but you're going to have the same problem. Who's saying who's good in the zone, except a judge? So it's fatal. It is fatal, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Mr. Rosendahl.
Madam President, and now I'd like to say good morning, staff. Let's go through this, questions first.
Sorry, Mr. Zuma Dog would like to speak before they do that. Mr. Rosendahl.
Well, then you can't speak afterwards. Okay, go ahead.
One minute.
Yes, yes. What I have to say hasn't changed in two years, because my name's Zuma Dog, y'all, and I came in here April 4, 2006, two-year anniversary to the week. And I could repeat my public comment. I said that Mark Brown, he's sitting right there, City Attorney, sold all of y'all a bill of goods, that it was a federal violation of First Constitution Amendment. Look at me, people. This is why the city's in trouble. I walked in here and said that this city attorney, Mark Brown, sold all of y'all a bill of goods. It was unconstitutional. It was wrong, and you pretended like you didn't know. And now look what happened. Two years later, you're repealing it, you're doing exactly what we said, you got your asses handed to you in court by the dream team, legal team of Hunt-Dowd. Ha, 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 ha. Now you're here today to repeal, to do what we said two years ago. We were right all along. Ha, ha. Two years of Zuma Dog. Ha, ha. Two years of all of this, every day, because of Venice Beach, and you were wrong, and we were right. And there's Mark Brown, and now you have to do what we said to do. Ha, ha.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Now we have a bunch of questions for the various parts of the city, and I want to thank you all very much for spending the last year diligently engaged in this issue, not only from the mediation sessions with the judge, but also with the community and all of the meetings you've all taken on various levels, and I thank you very much for that. all of the meetings you've all taken on various levels, and I thank you very much for that. Okay, let's start with the city attorney. Here are a bunch of questions, okay? Take us through the framework of the new ordinance. Please begin by explaining the new P and I zone. What are they? Who may use each zone? How they are intended to work? Are all of the spaces on Oceanfront Walk? What are these spaces' sizes? And how many spaces are there? The P and the I's. Explain that to us.
Thank you, Councilman. Adjacent to the merchants on the boardwalk—
Grab the mic up closer to you and state your name for the record.
Yes, I will. I'm Senior Assistant City Attorney, Mark Brown. Adjacent to the merchants on the boardwalk, the draft ordinance establishes P zones for performing artists and speakers who are primarily not engaged in vending expressive items. There are 105 P-zone spaces, five of which are double-sized for the performers who draw large crowds, 10 of which are unassigned and available on a first-come, first-served basis, and two of those which may be used only for giving away food. Items may be given away free of charge, and donations may be requested, but may not be required to receive an item in the P zones. No permit is needed to occupy a P-zone space between November 2nd and the day before Memorial Day weekend. During peak season, however, which is Memorial Day weekend through November 1st, a permit is required, and spaces are assigned weekly by lottery. However, afternoon each day, any person may use an unoccupied space for a lawful P-zone purpose, provided they immediately relinquish the space to the assigned permit holder upon request. The draft ordinance also creates I zones. A permit is required year-round for the use of an I-zone space, which spaces are assigned by lottery. There are 100 I-zone spaces. Any activity allowed in a P-zone space is allowed in the I-zone. Additionally, I-zone permit holders may vend expressive items created by themselves and items inextricably intertwined with the vendor's message. Only I-zone permit holders may use unoccupied I-zone spaces afternoon daily, provided they must immediately relinquish their space to the assigned permit holder upon request. While LAPD is responsible for overall enforcement of Section 42.15, enforcement of prohibited vending in the I-zones will be enforced administratively by Recreation and Parks pursuant to rules adopted pursuant to the authority of this draft ordinance.
Let's just take that point as my next question. How are East Side merchants protected from illegal vending? That's one of the biggest issues, and that's why we want to get this in before the summer comes up, because they have been really assaulted by unauthorized merchants on the West Side. How are the East Side merchants protected from illegal vending?
The draft ordinance addresses their concerns in two ways. The first way is by the creation of the P zones in which no vending, no traditional vending, is allowed, and those P zones are located adjacent to the merchant businesses. The second way is that the ordinance provides, in the I-zones, that only expressive items may be vended, or expressive items that are either created by the vendor or are inextricably intertwined with speech, and Wreckin' Parks would be enforcing through a permit process that requirement, so that if there were to be illegal vending competitive with merchants in the I-zones, Wreckin' Parks would be responsible for noticing violations, and upon a third violation, a permit to use I-zone space would be revoked.
Very good. And let's just say that from another angle. Can an artist vend his or her creations on Oceanfront Walk? Where and must, what must they do to use a space on Oceanfront Walk?
The current program that Wreckin' Parks has, which would not be greatly altered by this, is that in order to get a permit for a space, for an assigned space on the boardwalk, you need to obtain a permit, and you need to get an assigned space in the lottery. During peak season, that would still be the case in the P zones. During the rest of the year, any person could exhibit and use a P-zone space on a space-available basis, and they could show their art. But to vend your own creations on the boardwalk, you would need to get a permit, have an assigned space, and be located in the I zones.
Thank you for that. And where can performers perform?
Performers can perform in the P-zone. Again, they don't need a permit to do so during off-season, but during peak season, they would just need to get a permit, and then they can occupy any P-zone space. Also, any activity that's lawful in the P-zone can occur in the I-zone, provided that there's a permitted and assigned space.
Appreciate that. And now, this is a community question that has come up throughout the whole process. How can the ordinance then change to better protect nearby residents from excessive noise? That's the amplified sound we're allowed and we're prohibited, the pagoda and street intersection with Oceanfront Walk, amplification or performing allowed or barred, decibel levels, equal enforcement on East Side and West Side. Explain that.
Yes, Councilmember. The draft ordinance addresses noise on the boardwalk in three different ways. One of the ways that you alluded to was the enforcement of decibel limits, and the ordinance has a provision in it that states that any noise above 75 decibels when measured from 25 feet away is prohibited, and any noise above 96 decibels measured from 1 foot away is prohibited. And that would apply equally to structures that abut the boardwalk. It would be applied equally to them, measured from their property line to the boardwalk. So, it applies with regard to users of the boardwalk as well as property owners adjacent and abutting the boardwalk. Another way that the ordinance seeks to address noise concerns is through the regulation of amplified sound. And the way the ordinance regulates amplified sound is there are two areas in the P-zone where there are designated spaces allowing the use of amplified sound. And other than in those two designated P-zone spaces within the zones, amplified sound is prohibited everywhere else on the boardwalk and on the area covered by Section 4215. Finally, the city's noise laws always apply on the boardwalk, so there would be a third available enforcement.
My last question for you, and then I'm going to move quickly through the rest, because there's lots of other issues the city is in the process of dealing with at today's meeting, and we need a quorum, is explain, who will enforce this ordinance, in the P-zone and in the I-zone?
Yes, I can do that. In the overall enforcement responsibility, as I mentioned earlier, is with LAPD. However, one of the issues that was addressed in court and that the draft addresses, the draft ordinance addresses, is that rather than criminalize the illegal vending that goes on occasionally and we're seeking to prohibit on the boardwalk, that vending in the I-zones would be a matter to be enforced administratively by Wreckin' Parks, which means there would not be LAPD enforcement, there would not be criminalization to the notices of violation given, but merely that permission to utilize a permitted space, which you need in order to vend expressive items on the boardwalk, would be revoked if you were a continual violator of the rules.
Thank you for that. And Wreckin' Park, I'm going to do all your questions real quick for comments from you on the overall issues here that impact you. Just real quickly, Recreation and Parks, are you satisfied that your department has been given adequate opportunity to participate in the process that led to this new ordinance? Do you believe the new ordinance is workable? Does your current and proposed budget give you adequate resources to carry out your duties under the ordinance and the program rules? The ordinance and rules call for new signage and new procedures. It is essential that we have a successful launch for the new law. Do you have the resources to immediately create the new signage, equipment, train your staff, and put sufficient personnel on the boardwalk to make this work?
Good morning, City Council. Sofia Pena-Cortez, Superintendent for the Department of Recreation and Parks. Based on the ordinance, the Department of Recreation and Parks did create the program rules, and we are in support of enforcing the ordinance, and we understand the importance of it. And as City Attorney indicated, we were asked by the court, the city, to implement this. However, we do not have the adequate funding and resources, and this ordinance is unenforceable if we do not receive the adequate funding needed. In order for us to be able to implement the program this year, Memorial Day through the end of the fiscal year, we were, we are requesting $22,000. That would be for six monitors at 20 hours a week, plus be able to purchase a replacement of the actual photo ID printing machine to be able to print the IDs, a computer and printer that needs to be replaced, two camcorder cameras, and two digital cameras, and also to be able to identify all of the areas, the new areas for the zoning, we would need funding for the signage.
And what's your total bottom line?
$104,232 per year for the remaining of this fiscal year, $22,000.
Good. Thank you very much. And colleagues, when we do vote on this, as time goes on, we're going to have to come up with the funding, otherwise we can't enforce this and make it work.
That's correct.
LAPD, real quickly, a bunch of questions. And welcome to this, Joe Hiltner. Great guy, community loves you, you're very open, and you listen, and you work with people, and we appreciate how you work. Are you satisfied that your department has been given an adequate opportunity to participate in the process that led to this new ordinance? Do you believe the new ordinance is workable? Does your current and proposed budget give you adequate resources to carry out your duties under the ordinance? The ordinance calls upon the LAPD to perform new duties on the boardwalk. This will require training. Will you train all LAPD officers deployed to the boardwalk to enforce this new ordinance? Will this training take place before Memorial Day and continuously periodically thereafter to ensure consent, constant enforcement? And has noise enforcement team been involved in this process, and will they train Beach Patrol to enforce excessive noise provisions? Captain?
Yes, thank you. The Los Angeles Police Department has been involved from the very beginning with the City Attorney's Office, Recreation and Parks, and we've all worked very closely to ensure that we've come up with a process here that will provide for the community's safety and provide for those that want to use the boardwalk in an environment that works for everybody. The training will be provided to our staff, the officers that currently work the beach, as well as the other officers that may also respond down to the beach area from other areas of Pacific. The noise enforcement team has provided us with a couple of devices that we will be using to enforce, excuse me, the noise ordinance. The one issue is that we're not going to be providing any extra personnel to that beach to enforce these rules that have been adopted. Ideally, we would like to place more personnel. There may be a need for new equipment as far as noise, decibel readers and so on, to have a greater impact in ensuring that we can enforce all of the rules and the laws that have been placed into the system with this ordinance.
Let us know over time what other resources you will need to get the job accomplished. We want to make sure you're good. Okay, I want to move that the CAO and the CLA work with Wreckin' Park and LAPD to identify funding to implement provisions of this new Venice Beach Walk ordinance and report to Budget and Finance Committee within 30 days. I'd like to make that second by Mr. Labange.
Okay, we do have two speakers on the queue. We do have public comment. Ms. Hahn, Mr. Labange, you want to have our public comment, or you want to speak now?
I was just, I just have a couple of questions. You know, we, I really want to thank everybody for kind of staying at the table. I think these kinds of agreements always take a lot of patience and tenacity, and I appreciate you doing that. For over two years, we've had several people coming down to the City Council, speaking during a public comment. Part of what I was going to ask is, does this new ordinance give a space to Michael Hunt to sell his Shea butter? Because, I mean, that's one of the things he came down here for two years complaining about. So, I just want to know, does this ordinance do that, or can we expect him to continue to come down to the City Council?
His case is actually still being litigated. The court will determine whether Shea butter is protected by the First Amendment.
Okay. And are we in the process? Okay, say that again?
Yes, that case is still being litigated in court. It's being handled by another city attorney, Todd Wang, and the court will determine whether Shea butter is protected by the First Amendment. Case law would indicate that it's not, and so I—
Okay. And are we settling the other cases?
We are settling the case brought by Food Not Bombs versus City of Los Angeles, which they were represented by Carol Sobel. That case, we are settling. The other case, we are not settling. They were not a catalyst, they were not responsible for the judge reaching his decision to help us develop a new ordinance. They just basically took Ms. Sobel's lawsuit and refiled it.
Okay, so it's still ongoing whether or not certain things can be sold and whether or not certain people will be able to have a space there?
That's correct.
And when do we believe that we'll have an answer to that?
I would think sometime within the next few months.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. Madam President, members, Mr. Rosendahl, thank you and your staff for carrying on on this. And Ms. Hahn, thank you for your remarks, too, remembering every public comment that's been made by some. Here at the table, I want to thank you, Captain, as always, and Ms. O'Neill, the neighborhood prosecutor who was here in the beginning in Wreckin' Parks. Mr. Brown, there's one minor modification, I think, that's necessary. Is that correct?
There is. Thank you.
Could you recite that, and then we can move that?
Yes, we brought in a substitute ordinance today, as I mentioned in committee last week that we would be. And, I'm pretty close, I'm about to eat it.
Good job there, that's why you're captain, sorry.
Yes, so the substitute ordinance has one clarifying change. The clarification to just remove any ambiguity is that in subdivision four of subsection F of the ordinance, which relates to amplified sound, it expressly states where amplified sound is allowed. The subdivision immediately following that has been changed to just make it very clear that everywhere else covered by Section 4215, amplified sound is prohibited. So, that's the only change. The way the ordinance was drafted that we sent through previously, it listed places where amplified sound was prohibited. It's a little bit more clear to just say everywhere else except where it's allowed, it's prohibited, and that's the only change, a very insubstantial but clarifying change.
All right, all right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I move that. I need a second by Mr. Rosendahl, just to move that amendment, if that's okay, on that aspect there. It's timely that you brought this forward, too, because this is April, it's a time when spring comes around the corner and summer is just there for us. This will be in place when? Projection?
30 days after publication, so if the council, when the council acts on the ordinance and they are, and if they were to adopt it, it would be the amount of time it takes for publication, plus 30 days. So, it should be, it should be in May, and it should be before Memorial Day weekend.
Let's try to do it before Memorial Day weekend, that would be great. I thank everybody for their work, and especially your staff, Mr. Rosendahl, that worked at and the good public meeting that we had last week, and also for the Recreation of Parks staff and their commission that heard this several times, go forward. Onward and upward for a better and more beautiful Venice Beach area and experience for all.
If I could, if I could also add, the matter is also subject to approval of the mayor, so you have to factor in some extra time for that, too.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Okay, we do have the public—
Madam Chair, we're ready now for public comment. And if I could ask you to kind of turn your chairs around to look at the public when they speak, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Bill Greenslade, Teresa Daitland, Marie Fink.
Bill Greenslade, I was going to speak on some other matters, but I hear the Park and Recs saying that it's unenforceable, they don't have a budget, the police department doesn't have the equipment, there's no signs available. Do you really believe all of this will be in place in 30 days? I do not believe that. You're going to find yourselves right back in the courtroom again. That's all I have to say, it's not reasonable.
Thank you. Teresa Daitland?
For what it's worth, Bill gave me the rest of his time. Okay, I'll give you a little bit of history. The reason you're dealing with this is because the city, after the 2000 census and its wisdom, City Council decided— city council decided to put all of the valuable beachfront property, which had been among several districts, into one called CD 11, and give it to the wife of a developer, and we've had problems ever since. I looked at this ordinance, here's the ordinance, here's the Constitution. The ordinance is longer than the Constitution that established the government for the United States. What does that tell you? Can you say micromanagement? Can you say oppressive invasive techniques to install a program that is basically violating our First Amendment rights? Has any of you read the Constitution? Do you know about the First Amendment? And if you have problems figuring out what commercial vending is, try looking it up in Webster's Dictionary.
Thank you very much.
Now, I want to end with one question. Why is Mark Brown still on the city's payroll?
Ma'am, if you would address, you cannot address individuals there. Miss, yes.
In light of the last two public comments, perhaps if I could read a portion of Council Rule 12 regarding the rules at the quorum, persons addressing the council shall not make personal, impertinent, unduly repetitive, slanderous, or profane remarks to the council, any member of council, staff, or general public, nor utter loud threatening, personal, or abusive language, nor engage in any other disorderly conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any council meeting.
Thank you. Marie Fink, Marie Fink, okay. Michael Hunt? Anthony O'Carroll? Followed by Stephen Human?
Good morning. I'm Anthony O'Carroll. I work for a company that's owned and operated property in Venice and on the boardwalk for more than 30 years. We've just completed, sorry, thank you, we've just completed a loft mixed-use development on either side of Thornton Avenue, and so I'm here basically today to represent the future residents of those properties. Our concern, first of all, I mean, we broadly welcome the ordinance and appreciate very much the work that the councilman's office has done and the city attorney's office has done, but our concern relates to one small portion of the amplified sound provision as currently set up. As you know, there are specified zones where amplified sound is permitted. South of Horizon, we don't have a problem, we think that's in character, keeping with the character of the neighborhood, but there are two blocks north of Horizon between Breeze and Brooks and Brooks and Park, where we think the cumulative effect of the noise is going to be significant, and we request that it would be removed. It would lead to simpler enforcement, less noise, and there's no legal or constitutional prohibition on the elimination.
Steve Human, followed by David Dror, followed by Barbara Duffy.
Good morning, council members. I also work for a company that's owned property on the boardwalk for over 30 years. This has been a very long process, and this time we've got it vetted by the judge, and so I think we certainly have the most legal ordinance that we could come up with. I also second Councilmember Han's comments. I want to thank everyone here for sticking with it. Whenever we are in between ordinances, so to speak, it really hurts the small businesses on the boardwalk, and without the people here, they really have nobody to stick up for them. So I appreciate it, I support the ordinance heartily. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Dror, followed again by Barbara Duffy, followed by Ira Coslow.
Hi, my name is David Dror, and I've been coming here for many years. I want to thank our councilmen for doing a phenomenal job, the DA, the police department, Wreck-It Parks, Councilman Labange, and everyone else who's been involved. I think this is about the best we can hope for, and I really, really urge you, please give it a try, pass this ordinance, and let it run. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Dror? That was David, I'm sorry, David, thank you very much. Barbara Duffy, apologize.
Good morning, Barbara Duffy. I'm with the Venice Beach Merchants Association for 28 years. The merchants have been suffering severely without an ordinance, and they are in full support of this one. The only concern that we've had is this peak time they speak about. It is incorrect. It is from March until the middle of September. It includes the spring break, which is just as busy a time for us as the summer is, and I can't believe it's been ignored. I know it's a little late to consider it, I have asked several people to include that, but in any case, we hope that the police will be able to enforce this, and the merchants are in full support of them if they need our help, or Parks and Rec as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ira Coslow, followed by Barbara Peck, and followed by Paul Carey.
I want to talk about the amplification part of this. Free speech, great, giving out food on the beach, great, hand crafts, great, music, great. There's nothing in the Constitution about amplification. You have people coming down here screaming at you. Can you imagine if they were over here screaming at you? What we get on the beach is a constant barrage of sound. 96 decibels is way too high. I was in the music business. At the soundboard, they measure 100 decibels, that's what the sound is. Stand at the soundboard at a rock concert, and you'll see the loudness of 96 decibels. Also, musicians, great. People park on Venice Boulevard, they park on Rose, they walk down, they walk back. They will pass by everybody there. If they want to give them money, they will give them money, whether or not it's amplified. It's not like you have to draw attention to yourself. The same goes for the stores. People complain about the stores, they are too loud. As residents, we don't hear them because they face the other way. But to be fair, you should keep the same rules for the stores as the musicians. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barbara Peck, followed by Paul Carey, followed by Gail Rogers.
Yes, hello. I would just like to point out that the city has taken a world-renowned, First Amendment-protected, free speech designated, or designated free speech zone, and turned it into a swap meet. And the city claims that they are currently enforcing the current ordinance, which is a lie. And if they cannot enforce the current ordinance, I really wonder how they intend to enforce this very complicated, new amended ordinance. And I feel that this city council needs to take more time to examine the repercussions of the vote that they are about to make. And if you have ever been to Venice Beach, and if you have ever tried to set up a booth there, I think you would understand that there are many complex issues, and the most complex of all is defining what is inextricably intertwined, and what is expressive, and what is commercial. And this boardwalk is being commercialized, privatized...
Thank you very much. We have to ask you to conclude, please.
Okay, and basically being sold out to developers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Carey, Gail Rogers, and then James Schley.
Thank you very much for hearing me. A downtown business owner who spends his weekends on Venice Beach, a performer actually, and what is messing up the community there at the Oceanfront Walk is more the commercial vending. You have, it's funny that the noise would precipitate it. But the big issue right now with the way they've laid out the boardwalk is you've concentrated all amplified sound into one area. Instead of dispersing it at points where it wouldn't feed up the streets, you put it all into one area. This won't work because of acts being beside themselves, creating interference with each other, and the concentration of all those noise generating sources in one area is going to create problems for you, create greater problems for you. The other is, in the ordinance, and this has been brought up in public comment before, the noise figures that are given in the ordinance in section F are below the average ambient sound level on the beach.
Thank you very much. Gail Rogers, James Schley, Rishkavi Ragudas.
I'm Gail Rogers. I'm a 30-year resident of 33 Park Avenue, and when I saw the proposed revised ordinance, I was aghast, to say the least. You may call me a NIMBY because I admit I am one. I find it ironic that our street was chosen as the one to have amplified music abutting our pagoda. We have been very unified and successful in keeping amplified sound from our street. We even have a name. It's the Park Avenue Residents Coalition, Akron and Park. We, furthermore, if you were to walk up our street, you would see that we're the only walk street that adheres to the no-high fences rule. We have all agreed to keep our fences low, which makes us even more vulnerable to loud noise. Right now, I appreciate that there will no longer be amplified music in the pagodas, but if you look at the new draft, it butts our pagoda, and please, I urge you to move the amplified zone away from Park Avenue, please reconsider its placement. I speak from experience when I say that loud sounds, even a few stalls south of the pagoda can still be heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schley?
Morning, I'm James Schley. I live on Park Avenue as well. I've lived in Venice for 36 years, 17 years of which I lived on Oceanfront Walk. I can tell you that if you live on Oceanfront Walk, you're asking for noise and music because that's what happens there. There is a problem in that, in my opinion, to have amplified music immediately adjacent to a walk street such as Park Avenue, and we've been very militant about maintaining Park Avenue as a zone where people can live in quiet harmony, and there's nothing quiet about Park Avenue, don't get me wrong, but to have amplified music immediately adjacent to Park Avenue pagoda is a recipe for disaster. You're not going to be able to enforce it, in my opinion. I think it puts an additional burden on the police because it's immediately abutting that pagoda, and it's just not going to work. So I would urge you to consider that, move it some way, one way or the other, and also the decibel level is, I think, outrageous. I think that should be brought down, that would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rishkavi, followed by Stephen Fisk.
Thank you. Well, to quote Yogi Berra, "It's deja vu all over again," although he also said "It ain't over till it's over," and I doubt very much whether this is over. The problem has been an imposed system rather than a system that comes from the community itself. And while there has been much dispute over whether the community has it together enough to be able to put itself together, and therefore left itself open to an imposed system, I would still say that in the drafting of ordinance after ordinance, the community has simply not been listened to in its most essential elements. The big thing that I'm seeing here that seems unworkable to me is the enforcement itself because of the fact that so many divergent elements are on the boardwalk. I would urge you to take a positive rather than an imposed and negative view of this and attempt to accommodate the true spirit of Venice which we all want to keep. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Fisk, followed by Mike Fulper, followed by Peggy Lee Kennedy.
Good morning, council. Stephen Fisk, 35-year resident of Venice. I think whenever you have a living human stage filled with unique and spontaneous interactions, that it's going to be very difficult to have a law without imperfections. However, this law has more imperfections because it's more confusing and more complicated than any previous law. And then when you add on top of that the problem of enforcement, where the LAPD has been trying to do a good job, but is in a position where they're really not able to handle the artistic temperaments that are on the boardwalk, you have, you're setting the stage for more lawsuits. We need a simpler law, we need community policing, and we need a third party to operate on the boardwalk to form a buffer zone between the Westside Merchants and the LAPD, so that the community becomes empowered itself.
Thank you very much. Mike Fulper?
Michael Fulper, Venice Beach Merchants Association. We honor your attempt to create an ordinance that we're very desperately in need of to protect our rights as merchants, but we're afraid that this ordinance is too detailed, too complex, and is going to be very difficult to enforce. It's too short a time period to go into it here, not that anybody would be listening that great anyway, but we should have been able to sit down at the table with you guys and draw this up. You know, we're there every single day. I could tell you 100 things you're going to have to deal with because I'm there every single day, and I know what's going to go on. Inextricably intertwined, not going to be able to enforce that. I can create a symbol, say it's involved with my spiritual belief, etch it onto every piece of art I have on display, and right there it's inextricably intertwined. That's just one example. I got, I got a lot to say.
Thank you very much. Peggy Lee Kennedy, followed by Susanna Kraus, followed by Amaya, I think, Madder?
Hello, council members. Thank you for hearing me. I'll try to be polite. I'm with Venice Food Not Bombs, and I submitted a request to amend the 12 o'clock rule that allows people to walk on after 12 noon, but if somebody comes two hours later after you've spent an hour setting up, they basically can kick you out, and this causes a lot of fights. This rule causes fights, so I don't suppose you'd reconsider that now, but another thing I wanted to say is that I think that people who are fighting for our constitutional rights should be thanked, and we haven't even taken an oath to get paid to do a job. We haven't taken the oath, we just do it because we know it's right, and we should be thanked and we should be apologized to because the city has violated our First Amendment rights, and this has not happened.
Thank you very much. Susanna Kraus?
Good morning. I am talking about an artist's point of view. First of all, I think you overcomplicated your ordinance what you created here. Nobody talks about, if you just simple take the commercial vendors out of Venice, we wouldn't have this problem. That's the whole point of view. I am sitting at Rose, corner of Rose, above me I see this daily, no commercial vending. I never see that any of you takes care of this problem. It wouldn't be all this problem. I think your law what you created is so complicated, it's going to be so much problem here that you will be sorry for that. Just take off the commercial vending. Still today, the recreation parks gives out any, for anybody. Come down one afternoon or any weekend and see what's happening there. It's easy to make law at your desk, you don't know what is over there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amaya? And I think after that is Dr. John Michael.
Good afternoon. Although it's easy to get emotional when speaking on this issue, I'm going to try and stay very rational. First of all, I've been on the beach 11 years. A few years back, I was part of the group that was invited, the beach group that was invited to help draft the ordinance that is now, that is, that we're now using, and I've sat in on many a meeting with police officers and Parks and Recreation where their refrain was, "We can't enforce it." One of the big problems, again, as several people have said, was the inextricably entwined. It is so easy to get around it, it has to be ridiculous. It means taking a little bead of a certain color and gluing it on to whatever it is you bought downtown. There's one big problem. Secondly, I heard a mention of Parks and Recreation being the enforcement system for illegal vending. I myself have heard Parks and Recreation say that they cannot do that because without being crude, people basically tell them, "Go to hell, you're not a cop." That's not going to work either. Do I have more time?
No, I'm so sorry. Thank you very much. Is it Dr. John Michael? Okay, followed by Marie Fink.
All right, it's Dr. John Michel.
Thank you.
And I'm here to address, well, first of all, city council and fellow citizens. I'm here to address the I and P zones. I am an active-duty Vietnam veteran with AmeriCorps Food Not Bombs. The P zones, there's not enough, there's not enough places to pee in the beach. The bathrooms, the sewage systems... in the beach. The bathrooms, the sewage system, I'm trying to make a joke out of this so Villa can understand that I am also leading the secession from LA. We're charging Villa Gross here with gross mismanagement. We are also going to thank Rosenthal and the Park Department, and we're inviting everyone down to the beach Saturday and Sunday. We're going to have a stage facing the ocean. To set the decimal levels, and I would like Harry Perry to lead the band for our setting decimal levels. We're asking people to join our demonstration and boycott the Olympics.
Thank you. Marie Fink? Marie Fink?
I want you to know that I've been trying to find this place for two and a half hours. I'm in drama. Don't ever bring me, whatever you guys settle today, that's it, because I'm not coming back here. My name is Marie Fink, and it's really nice to see you. Hi, Bill. I love you. I love you, Mark. I just have one thing to address, mostly to the police, that I'm willing to work with anything, whether it works out or not, but I'm on Sidewalk Cafe, and I am going to be in the P zones. But we have everyone performing in front of Sidewalk Cafe, but they can't do nothing because it's on our side. And large shows. It used to be just one guy who was a mine guy. Now it's like all day long. And there's no way, because I'm about to perform myself besides being a psychic, and I'm going to be a silver woman, everyone. But by the way, I don't think it's fair for you guys to make all these rules for us, and then we can't work, certainly if I'm going to perform, because they're doing huge shows all day long in front of Sidewalk Cafe. And I think I mentioned that when we took our walk, but it became real serious now, Mark. And I just hope everything works, and I thank all of you because in room of three, one, one cares, one don't care, and one don't give a damn. So try your very best, and I know everybody's trying their very best, and anyway goes, someone's not going to like it. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends our public comment. That item is now before us. Mr. Rosenthal, I know there were a couple of amendments that were made to that. Madam Clerk, there were friendly amendments, as I recall, both of them. So before we take the vote, Mr. Rosenthal?
Why don't you do the friendly amendments, and then I'll make the comment.
Okay, the two amendments. The first one was to move that the CAO and the CLA work with Wreckin' Parks and LEDWP to identify fundings to implement provisions of this new Venice Beach Boardwalk Ordinance and to report to Budget and Finance Committee in 30 days. And the other ordinance, excuse me, the other amendment was to adopt the new ordinance, which has some amendments in subsection 4F.
Thank you. That item is now before us with those amendments. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next item is going to be, Madam Clerk, is item number 19, Mr. Weisar. Item number 19, that is before us. Mr. Weisar?
Yes, thank you very much. Do you have any public speakers on that, Madam President?
Mr. Sacks and Russell Brown.
If we could allow public speakers first?
One minute?
Yeah.
One minute for Arnold Sacks, followed by Russell Brown. Yes, Mr. Rosenthal?
Ask that the clerk publish this ordinance. In order to expedite the effective date of the ordinance, we'd like to make sure that happens. And for Peggy Lee Kennedy, I apologize if anybody violated your constitutional rights on bombs, you know, on that. And the overall issue, thank you so much, colleagues, for your supportive motion on the financing. We do need to work on that issue. And thank you all for listening and for moving forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. That will go forthwith, Mr. Rosenthal? Forthwith. Mr. Sacks, followed by Russell Brown, followed by Victor Franco.
Good morning, city council. Thank you very much. Arnold Sacks, very quickly, as I mentioned in a committee hearing, this item before you is not just a $60,000 raise, it's actually an 80% raise on the original contract, which was $100,000. And in addition, I'd like to point out that the LACMTA is looking for the downtown rail system, and you have the Broadway system. When you initiate these studies, it should be a complete study. This study has been extended because nobody knew where to put the cars when they're finished used, when they're done being used for transportation. It's almost too ridiculous to even think about. Where would you, wouldn't that include on the study, the storage of the rails, the maintenance for the rails, and the rail system itself? The fact that this contract is increasing 80% is outrageous. Thank you for your time and your answers.
Thank you. Russell Brown, followed by Victor Franco.
Thank you. Russell Brown?
Could you, Russell, could you hold on just one second? We'll hold your time. Yes, Mr. Reyes?
I want to make sure we can do rule 20, I mean, item 23 forthwith?
Item 23, go forthwith. Thank you.
Thanks. Russell Brown, Executive Director of the Stark Downtown Bid and President of Downtown LA Neighborhood Council. We want to thank both the CRA and Jose Weisar's office for getting us to this point. We're very, very much in support of this. Imagine being in a downtown where you could get around without needing a car. Imagine a $70 million investment. That's a public-private partnership that could create $3 billion in development. Imagine the 60,000 residents that will have downtown not needing to have to worry about parking. That's what we can do with the streetcar. Within 10 years, we will have absolute gridlock downtown, and this is the way to get around that. But more importantly, we'll have 4.5 million visitors at our convention center. We presently have 17 million visitors downtown, and this is a way to get people all throughout downtown. Next week, we have 20 people going to Portland and Seattle. We have the creators of the Portland Streetcar System who are here in South Park, and we're all going up to study those models. So please support this. We have a national seminar on streetcars, May 22, at Los Angeles Theater.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Victor?
Thank you, members of the council. Victor Franco, representing the Downtown Streetcar Committee, obviously been working on this project for quite some time, more than, more than seven, actually, more than 15 years than some of the members of our committee. But to give this body some comfort in terms of a budgetary perspective, while this is a significant investment, and we appreciate the investment by the city, that we are looking at, at public-private partnerships and including financial models for construction similar to, that was done in Portland and in Seattle. And so I think that, and even some of the property owners embracing the idea of possibly creating transit bids and other means of funding. So this will definitely turn on the lights in many other parts of downtown that are shuttered and are not even considered by investment. So we appreciate your support for this today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much, Madam President. What's before us is a continuation for the study of a feasibility to bring back the streetcar to downtown. And as many of you know, a few months ago, I announced an initiative called Bringing Back Broadway, where we hope to revive Broadway back to its glory days and to reopen some of those beautiful historic theaters that we have downtown. In fact, we have the most historic theaters in one corridor than any other place of the United States. They are jewels. They are gems. We should hold them up proudly to the rest of the world. When you walk in these theaters and you see their beauty, we want to make sure that they are exposed and available to everyone in Los Angeles and beyond. So they are our anchors. But the cherry on top on Bringing Back Broadway is getting the streetcar back to Broadway. But it will not only serve Broadway, it will also connect it to the other developments we see downtown, LA Live, the Grand Avenue Project. But we got to remember that it's not only for nostalgic reasons that we're doing this. Yes, many of us even rode those streetcars. I did, and I was too young. But the fact of the matter is that with all the new development and the new residential developments we see in downtown, we need a better transportation system. And streetcars, in fact, can be built faster and much less expensively than light rail. So I think this is a good transportation system to, to keep studying, and hopefully within a few years, we'll see the streetcar running down Broadway and all of downtown once again. I want to thank the speakers who came out today, Russell Brown and Victor, particularly CRA and Metro have been working on this. Hopefully, with Bringing Back Broadway, we could use that as a catalyst to keep the momentum going and bring back the broad, the streetcar to downtown. So thank you all very much for your support in this, and we look forward to having the city council's full support as we move forward in bringing back the streetcar to downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange?
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Weisar, on this giant step here on the issue there. It is something to look at these other cities. I know in Bordeaux, France, which is a sister city of ours, they in a short period of time did streetcar system to their center city and revitalized that, to look at that issue there. There's more buses, next to Wilshire Boulevard, there's more buses going on Broadway than anywhere else. And it would be interesting in this thought if they could have this system of a streetcar that would connect Staples, that would connect the historic Pueblo of Los Angeles, and at the same time, have these buses come out to the outside of downtown so people could get on that system and move. Good start, good planning, safety first. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Madam President. Great idea. You know, we down in the Harbor area have had our red car running now for several years. In fact, we were a little criticized because we had kind of the red car before we had all the redevelopment and the renaissance of our downtown San Pedro. So in fact, many people called it the red car to nowhere. But I am really glad that we had the foresight down there. And Bob Henry, who just left, was here for another item, who worked for our Harbor Department for many, many, many years, is the expert on red cars. And you would do well to engage him and his expertise on how he was able to run our red car, work on building another one. And we hope to, in downtown San Pedro, run it up Sixth and Seventh Street as well, besides just along the waterfront. So it is a great idea. It brings people together. People have great memories of riding the streetcars, and this is a very smart idea. Mr. Weisar, and I congratulate you, and we would be glad to give you any of the information that we learned down in the Harbor area about the beautiful red car. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Labange?
Just one point of information. I, and I want to ask the historians to look at it. Was it a yellow car that went down Broadway or a red car? But the red car went down Main, and the yellow car went down Broadway. But we'll figure that out later. It should all be red car, because there's a lot of red in the American flag. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Hahn, I've ridden your red train car down there, which is wonderful. It's great to be able to go up the, up your various areas there to get to some of those shops and other things to eat. So it's great. Mr. Weisar, congratulations. And with that, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Colleagues, we are going, yes, forthwith?
Yes, thank you.
We're just going to quickly reconsider those items that were ordinances. We do have 12 members present, present. Madam Clerk?
And that would be items one through four and 13.
Thank you. If we could open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. That item is now before us again. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next items, Madam President, are items 15 and 16, and those were called special by Councilmember Alakon.
Mr. Alakon? We are on 15 and 16. There had been a request for the, open the public comment. Would you like to do that prior to your speaking?
I can do it now. I can do it now. Members, I, I had mentioned that I would not support the Department of Water and Power rate increases until at least I received a copy of the projects in my district. This is, this is what I got. And you would have to be a crystal ball reader to know what this means. There is no analysis attached to it, not even a cover memo, just a list of things that say, for example, on May 18, 2008, there's zero miles, zero TFSs and zero poles at 1589 Olden Street and Ralston. I have no idea what that means, but that's the kind of information. So there's pages and pages of this list of projects, so-called projects, that have no description whatsoever, and no analysis was provided. On the basis of that, I cannot support this rate increase without knowing what my district, and I don't know why we would support a rate increase without knowing what these projects mean to the City of Los Angeles. But I can't vote for this. And I'm really angry because I wanted to vote for a rate increase that could guarantee that our infrastructure was going to get the enhancements that it so much needs. Having said that, however, I do want to add what I guess you could describe as a friendly amendment. It is what I would call a non-substantive amendment, simply to call for a couple of reports back. So let me read this verbal motion, if I, if I may. On April 2, 2008, council files 073247 and 073248, that's the water and power rate increases, were amended to create Power Rate Increase Oversight Committee and a DWP Low Income Lifeline Customer Oversight Committee. These committees are intended to oversee the delivery of infrastructure improvements made with the revenue increased rates and to outreach and protect DWP Low Income Lifeline consumers, customers, I should say. While the intent to include the establishment of said committee with the proposed power and water rate increases was accomplished, there was no direction to have a report to come back to council on a strategy and structure to accomplish this. I therefore move that the Department of Water and Power, the CAO and the CLA be directed to report back to the Energy and Environmental Committee in 60 days with a detailed strategy, including procedures, timeline, structure, and to effectuate the establishment of the DWP Low Income Lifeline Customer Oversight Committee and the Power Rate Increase Oversight Committee. I'm very disappointed that DWP has not been forthright, not to mention the ECAF that is in the LA Times today, that is included in this vote, by the way, and I'm not sure my colleagues know that. And it's that kind of deception that creates the kind of distrust that, that creates havoc in our community and, and really gets them angry at the City of Los Angeles and, and also as the DWP. I think it's unfortunate because I think all in all, we have one of the best utilities in the country, if not the best. But that kind of distrust undermines other efforts to strategically position us to provide better service at a, the most efficient rate possible. So I'm very disappointed that I cannot vote for these two motions.
Thank you. We do have, there'd been a request for public speakers for this item from Ms. Hahn. Ms. Hahn, would you like to have the public speakers on 15 and 16 now?
On what item?
This is 15 and 16, the DWP rates.
Oh, yes, yes. I would like to move that we open, what happened to 14? Did we do?
Sorry, I, we, we were so quick to skip over that. Mr. Reyes was going to be leaving soon, and we wanted to have this before. So we'll go to 14 after that. My apologies.
So when are we doing 14?
After 15 and 16.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I would like to move, we open, we open public comments?
A minute each, or?
How many do we have?
I think we have 10.
10?
We have 10 that have 15 and 16.
You know, I always feel like we should give people two minutes.
Let's do this, Ms. Hahn.
I think one minute is really difficult.
Ms. Hahn, we'll do two minutes for 15 and 16 together.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll start with Dr. Dan Weisman, followed by Candido Mares, followed by Solidad Garcia. Dr. Weisman? He left. Okay. Candido? We will do that. Solidad Garcia, followed by Candido Mares. Again, it is two minutes total for 15 and 16 before us.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. We appreciate this. Mine is going to be very short, other than the thank you to the board, and I'm, you know that we came here with hard issues and very personal issues and issues for the ratepayers and the financial impact on them. You, Mr. Alakon has been very persistent and consistent with the, with the voting for both water and power, and we appreciate that. I would like you to know that it is our intent, the Oversight Committee, to work with the DWP management relative to all of these issues and to work closely with them in an active and proactive basis. It's, we are part of the MOU, and we appreciate our position, and we'll do our very best to ensure that we can move ahead and forward in spite of all of these. I, we would like to have, however, a, a plan of the, a general plan of the infrastructure as you are, as you have probably already presented it to the board, but we haven't seen it or has the public. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Candido?
Thank you, Madam President. As all of you know, I've been fighting issues with DWP since 2004, when you created the Small Business Advisory Committee. And we found problems, we found problems in the procurement process. We have gone through four years of struggle, and now we have the proper le- We have gone through four years of struggle, and now we have the proper leadership. And I'm not saying that because I'm trying to score a point with you gentlemen. I'm there at some of your meetings, most of your meetings, but we have the right leadership there. But I'm asking that leadership to really be effective now. The procurement process is in trouble. Over a billion dollars is spent, and a lot of it is wasted. We were able to discover that the missed discounts weren't taken. We saw that a $9.6 million was paid for a bidding that the department never had any ownership to it. We saw that split SPOs, even myself as a vendor benefited from it. We exposed it to make sure that that didn't happen, and yet we find out it's still happening today. Many things are wrong with the procurement process. Now, Mr. Nahai has stated that he is going to check into that, and they are doing some interviews, et cetera, and hopefully they will fix that. But until the procurement process is fixed, and Ms. Hahn, you probably recognize one of the individuals that sits in charge. This is an individual that was told that he would not be in this position, and today he's in that position. How can we trust, if we're looking for trust, how can we trust when we see the individuals who caused so much pain and lied to one of the standing committees of this city council? Until those people are dealt with and dealt with properly, you will not gain our trust. But as far as the leadership, we look forward to your leadership in there.
Thank you, Candido. Humberto Camacho, followed by Katie Carlson, followed by Heinrich Kiefer.
Once again, members of the council, Humberto Camacho, Pico UNEVER Council, BLQ. I want to commend Brother Alarcon for his presentations and suggestions. If we go into a commercial institution and we need some service to be done, we pay, we agree, we got something in writing, so if something goes wrong, we can sue you. I don't mind paying additional cost for the question of electricity, but I need to have something in writing that the Department of Water and Power, within six months, is going to repair so many miles of cable, and also that nothing is going to go wrong. I think they still have the money to cover the water cost, and they don't need any increase. But certainly, we need an agreement from the Department of Water and Power, the City Council, that so many things are going to be corrected, improved, better for the community. And please remember that those signs and freeways is going to take more energy, and those old lines are not going to take the voltage that they're going to generate. Also, the lighting in downtown and the question of the city hall and other areas, commercial areas, that require a lot of electricity. You're wasting a lot of power that we don't need to waste. And we really need an agreement right, and if it's accomplished, send us a copy to each neighborhood council, and we can follow through. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Katie Carlson?
My name's Katie Carlson. I'm from Harbor Gateley South Neighborhood Council. I agree with the DWP's characterization of the ration, excuse me, the rate action increases. Of the $108 million anticipated increases, 30% is from the uncapped power reliability surcharge, or $216 million. This increase with the 10% municipal tax pushes our rates over 15%. The water pass-through are about $215 million. This brings it to 55% additional to the rate base. The modest are modest without the addition of the pass-throughs. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for being here. Heinrich? Is Heinrich still here? No, he spoke earlier. Daniel Vegas?
I think Daniel Weisman stepped out for a second. I chaired the Oversight Committee outreach, and it's been my job to get the information out to all the neighborhood councils and to try and get a little bit of feedback as to what is going on, and bringing that back to the chair and to the executive committee. Out of all the neighborhood councils in the City of Los Angeles, that's all the certified neighborhood councils, over 92% have said their voice, and their voice has been no on the increase. Now, I'm not sure as to the reason, and most of the questions they have been asked and been asking is, how is this money going to be spent? What oversight is going to be done? Out of all the neighborhood councils, they are not so much in, not in favor of a new rate hike, but they want to know where their money is going to be spent. Where is it going to go? Is it going to go for cable? Is it going to go for new poles? Is the water area is going to be a little bit cleaner? They wouldn't mind another rate hike if they knew exactly where this money was going to be spent. I think Mr. Alarcon and all the, and Mr. Smith and all the other council people, Mrs. Hahn, and that the questions that have surfaced through Jan Perry's committee are very, very reasonable, as to where is this money going to go? And that's the voice that is coming forward to you from all the neighborhood councils. They just want to know where their money is going to be spent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Zuma Dog?
Yes, first of all, thank you. It's very nice to be here before Mr. Nahai and Nick P., the two people from DWP. I've been monitoring the situation, watching them carefully. I do believe that they are here to try to cut back on the fraud, waste, and abuse that's been plaguing the system. And we have had a huge problem, so there is a lot of problems with trust and accountability, both here with council and the public. I do think they're really going to try, and they are really, they got a tough situation because they walked into this. I'd like to say we have a $60 million lawsuit, DWP versus the city. We're waiting for those results. And I would like to go on record and say that I'm told that if DWP gets to keep that $60 million, then the rate increase will be given back to the people. And is that true? If, is it? I'm getting yes on that. So then, again, if, so that's something important to know.
For the record, this is not a question and answer.
Excuse me. Excuse me. He's allowed to do it if he wants to. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Also, the firefighter, city council, mentioned that there was a tragic death of a firefighter due to aging infrastructure, that they needed the money for this, that that would be, that they needed the money for this infrastructure to prevent these problems in the future. I'd like to go on the record and let the public know that the money that is being voted and approved on today will not be going to the infrastructure that caused the freak accident. So city council tried to use that tactic. I'd like to say that it's not the case. And also, I'd like to know if line item 186 and 36 on the contracts, there's been problems with miscellaneous expenses, line item 85 and 185 and 36, where anything you want, anything you want, just put it on miscellaneous, just put it on miscellaneous, and so you get hundreds of thousands of dollars on miscellaneous things for like bottles of Windex, glass bottles from the 70s. I've been contacted by DWP, they don't have the supplies and safety equipment. This is all in the past. This is a clean slate from now, but these are the problems with just waste. It's like you think that DWP was getting paid a commission on dollars wasted. That's what I'm here to say, and I hope that stops.
Thank you. That is last public speaker card. That item is now before us. The amendment that Mr. Alarcon made was on item 15 or 16, Mr. Alarcon?
Both.
Both?
Yeah, both.
Both, okay.
And Madam President, do you wish to vote on them separately?
Yes, I know that was a request in the past. So colleagues, if you could all listen to this next item, we will be voting on item number 15 first, which is the power rate increase. Madam Clerk, this is the power rate increase, item number 15. Mr. Alarcon asked his questions. There are no other individuals on the speaker queue.
I talked already.
I guess we are not ready to vote on that item.
Do you want me to do it again, Mr. Zine?
Mr. Zine?
If I could just have a brief, maybe some very brief response from the Department of Water and Power. These questions came to me from constituents, and so I'd like to respond to them. And it regards the surcharge, and I remember we discussed this, we weren't really discussing surcharge, we were discussing the infrastructure improvement for water and power, the water side, the power side. The question about surcharges, according to this constituent, 15% during the time period similar to the proposed rate increase, the surcharges, those were never discussed. And I understand that the commission has the authority to establish surcharges on the water side, the power side. So the question is, when we're talking about these increases on the water side, the power side, they does not include the surcharges, as I understand. In addition, there was an article in today's newspaper that talked about up to at least 23% over the four-year period, and those numbers are much higher than were discussed last week. So if you could respond to, please, the surcharge and how that adds in and the overall rate on both sides, water and the power side. The other question, I know I talked to Mr. Smith about this earlier, was energy cost adjustment factor. Mr. Alarcon, I looked at that formula to try and figure that out, how that weighs into this. The bottom line is, if a person's paying $50 a month now with the surcharges and everything else, what are they going to be paying? Mr. David Nahai?
Right, Councilmember, thank you very much for the opportunity to respond to that question. I've been wanting to respond. Thank you for the opportunity, councilmembers, to appear before you again. My name is David Nahai. I'm privileged to serve as the general manager of DWP. Let me say this first. The word "surcharge" is a total misnomer. It's not a surcharge, it is a pass-through. And what is shocking is that anybody is shocked, because the issue of the ECAF and the pass-throughs is something that has been commented on, reported upon, discussed, debated before this council extensively. As a matter of fact, it has been so visible before this council that in the last motion that you adopted, you directed that the issue of the ECAF go back to committee for additional reporting as to exactly how it's going to work. This august body decided in October of 2006 to unfreeze or authorize the ECAF, which is the pass-throughs on the power side, decided to cap them. This is why they only go up 1% per quarter. And, but this was part of the very rates package that was sent to you. It's been, as I say, discussed extensively, and your direction to us is to discuss it with you even more extensively in committee. So there is no secret, there is no deception. And let me also add this. When this matter was considered by your honorable body in October of 2006, the neighborhood councils, led by Ms. Garcia, recognizing that to have these pass-throughs be disallowed was something that was going to be detrimental to the city, testified in favor of unfreezing it.
So the concern is for the ratepayer, and I was supportive of the power side to help that infrastructure, as you know, not supportive of the power side. We, I mean, supportive of the power side, not the water side. We've seen the outages in the power side. The concern I have for the constituents, the ratepayers, is to be candid when we're telling them, you're already paying this, how much more are you going to be paying when it comes to those dollars and cents? And when it comes to the surcharge or the cost recovery or the pass-through, because the cost of delivering that product increases every day. We see how the gasoline prices go up. Water and power has to pay for gasoline to power the vehicles. There are expenses to operate, whether you're government, private. And what we're doing is increasing the rate for an infrastructure, and then that question comes back. The dollars that we're approving on the water side, the power side, those dollars are going to be for what we have this Oversight Committee strictly for nothing other than that infrastructure that we talk about, that age-old infrastructure, not for any other costs, not for any other projects or programs, whether it be a washing machine or refrigerator, but strictly for the infrastructure, the hardware that needs to be replaced that we all know is way out of date.
And this is why we've submitted very detailed plans, the power reliability program, and on the water side. This is why we've readily agreed to what will now be three Oversight Committees, you know, in addition to the ENE Committee and the Budget Committee and every city council member and the mayor's office and 78 neighborhood councils and the Board of Commissioners. So I can't.
There'll be a lot of Oversight.
I can't imagine that there could be more scrutiny on this issue, and we're very happy to accept it.
So Mike, Mr. Smith informed me that something's going back to committee on the cost recovery, shall we say, or the pass-through. So those rates may change as that is discussed in committee? Or the structure or the formula may change?
No, I don't think the formula will change. We're certainly not proposing any change in the formula, but we have to understand those are pass-throughs. And so, subject to the cap, they may fluctuate. It may be, it may be that as we start to talk more about water conservation, as our energy conservation initiatives take hold, there will be less natural gas that is purchased, which may actually reduce that. But on the power side, there is a cap, which therefore both protects the city and the utility against fluctuations, especially in the natural gas market, but also protects the ratepayer who isn't going to be hit with a sudden and large rate increase. That's why it's 1% every three months.
I'd like to add, notwithstanding the fact that we are committed to 1% per quarter, 4% maximum, it has to be a greater accountability and transparency of those costs. So the commission intends to request staff to provide the exact revenues and how exactly the money is spent. We have a natural gas pass-through, renewable energy, but we have to do a more detailed accounting that we will be willing, again, quarterly to present to the committees and to the full council, how is that money spent? 1%, it is what it is, but what that 1% translates?
Okay. Well, I trust your experience and insight in the conference and the commissioners and our general manager. It's just that the ratepayers are suffering the consequences of nearly $4 for a gallon of gasoline and other products. And, you know, we want the service, we just don't want to increase the rate for it. And unfortunately, the system is so antiquated, if we don't do it, we're just going to have nothing but more future problems. So the commission that we are establishing from this body, each and every one of us will have someone assigned to an oversight, along with all the other oversights. And they will all be privy to the information related to the infrastructure and where those dollars are going and what's going to be done with it.
Yes. You're establishing three Oversight Committees. One is the civilian Oversight Committee, another one is the Oversight Committee suggested by the CLA in their report, and the third Oversight Committee is the low-income Oversight Committee.
Okay. Mr. Alarcon, I think we've addressed all those issues.
We do have a few more speakers on the queue now that you spoke, Mr. Zine.
Well, I'm glad I opened up the door. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Hahn, followed by Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Alarcon.
Thank you. You know, I too read the article today in the LA Times, and I've been contacted by a lot of my constituents. And I think it's, I think it's a little disingenuous for you to say you're shocked that we're shocked. I think that's probably what bothers people a lot, is that attitude. It's clear that we gave you the authority to do this, and whether or not it's a pass-through or a surcharge, that does not mean the ratepayer doesn't pay for it. The ratepayer is paying for it. And what many thought last week, an approval of a 9% rate increase, by the time these pass-throughs have been added on, is going to be a 23% increase. And I think it's not that I'm objecting to what the money is being used for. I think it makes sense. If the price of natural gas goes up, we gave you the authority to raise it 1% so that pass-throughs, it passes through to the ratepayer. I think what people are upset about, and that's why we need Oversight Committees, and we need someone to pay attention, is because the debate last week focused solely on these small rate increases. Never once, that I can remember, did you lay out, by the way, councilmembers, this will be in addition to the ECAF, is that what we're calling it?
The ECAF.
That's, I think, the issue here. We want transparency, we want accountability, we want everything laid out on the table. I think what the neighborhood council Oversight Committee is saying, just let's tell the truth. committee is saying, just let's tell the truth. Let's just tell the truth. What is it that the ratepayers are going to pay? Why are we charging them that? And then let's make a decision whether or not we think that's appropriate. I think it's, you know, a lot of people are shocked. A lot of people didn't have their calculators out last week going, oh, by the way, we did give them authority last year to raise this one percent. Okay, that's on top of this. Okay, it's going to happen four times. You know, I wasn't doing that. I wasn't sitting here with my calculator. It would have been absolutely the right time last week for you all to say, by the way, just to make, for full disclosure, this is in addition to this other increase that's going to happen most likely as a result of the increases of natural gas. I think that's all we're saying, David, is it seems to a lot of people that you all conspicuously didn't mention it. And I think that's the problem. So I don't think you need to say, I'm shocked that you're shocked. Okay? It would not have been a news story. That would not have been a story if people knew that that was happening. People are shocked. People are unaware that all the additions would raise the ratepayers' increase to twenty-three percent, as opposed to the nine percent that we thought we were approving. So that's all. I mean, I don't have a problem still voting for it. I voted last week in favor of the rate increase. I'm probably going to do it again today. But I just need to take this opportunity to say, that's the attitude that we don't need to have with the very people who own DWP and are the ratepayers. And yes, at the end of the day, we're still way below other utilities. We're still way below Southern California, Edison. We know all that. But it's just about transparency, accountability, truth-telling, so that everyone has all the information to make the decisions that we need to make, so that we're accountable to the people that we represent. So no more of the Casablanca, I'm shocked that you're shocked. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, Mr. Labonge, and Mr. Alakon.
Oh, look what I started.
Thank you, Madam President. I was looking at our demographic makeup of our city. We're about nineteen percent at poverty. How many comprise in about four to five council districts? Yet I understand that only about three percent of the folks who are, about three percent of the folks are using the Lifeline or those programs, it's only about three percent of your total customers. So on number five on the motion, there is a clause that says that to monitor and report on the status of any LA DWP's low-income and Lifeline program and attainment of penetration benchmarks to maximize eligible ratepayers' participation in the program on a quarterly basis as well. My question is, how would you plan to meet these benchmarks? How do you plan to meet these benchmarks? Is there a strategy in place? What documents would be you asking for? Who's going to qualify? Is there any way you can address that so that we can do our job in making sure that people that do qualify are actually responding? I am getting feedback from the seniors and the folks who are working two or three jobs and just barely making it, asking me, now we have to pay more. And I said, well, you could qualify for this Lifeline if you are in that economic stratum. But I could not give them specifics. Is there any way you can help us with that?
Sure. We have enrolled in the low-income and Lifeline program one hundred and eighty-seven thousand customers. Those are households. So extrapolating, we have in terms of the numbers of people that we're reaching, probably three or four times that. We had a discussion, I think, the last time we were here, as to what the penetration ratio is. You know, we believe we're probably penetrating around fifty to seventy percent, given the numbers that we have. However, we've also readily admitted that, and I'll do that again here today, that that isn't good enough as far as I'm concerned or as far as we're concerned. For that reason, we've developed an outreach plan in order to try to reach more people and to get more people enrolled. The outreach plan has a number of strategies in it, including working with the housing authority and other strategies. And I'm sure that your office has received it, if not council member, I'll make sure that you do. But we're also looking for suggestions. We're looking for, you know, proposals from the council offices as to how we can partner in order to do an even better job there that has been to date. I think this is also partly the reason why we're very agreeable to having a low-income oversight committee, which has been suggested as part of the motion, in order to try to do more productive work in terms of reaching people. And Commissioner Patzouris has also formed a low-income oversight committee within the commission as well. So there's a lot of concentration on this area.
One of the council persons, I think Mr. Weezer asked, who is going to be the point person at DWP in case people are interested to join the low-income? And Commissioner Edith Ramirez, who is going to chair that commission committee, will be the point person. You cannot hear me? Edith Ramirez, Commissioner Edith Ramirez, will be the point person at the commission level who will respond to your inquiries about low-income rates.
Well, I have regular town hall meetings in my district. I meet with various organizations throughout my district. So we can get literature from the department to hand out at that time. It could enhance the ability to communicate with folks. The natural meeting places in our district, my district in particular, are the folks who are learning English, the second language, in adult schools. These are the folks, we intercept them where they are gathering, to make sure they got. So I'll work with you to make sure we get creative in understanding how these folks who qualify can actually be part of that Lifeline program.
Absolutely. We'd be more than happy to come to those town hall meetings and make a presentation to your constituents who are going to gather there in order to make these programs readily understandable to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind the council that last week, I'm kind of surprised that people didn't understand we were doing this. But last week, when we had this up, I think it was item number eleven on the committee report was on the ECAF, and we sent that back to committee. So we'd have that separate discussion to understand exactly what that was. And so some were paying attention, and we did take care of that because we know the impact of it. But just, I think, and Mr. Rosendahl is an expert at this, for the public edification, why are we buying natural gas? You're a power company, you're a water company. Why do you buy natural gas?
We depend on natural gas to power our in-basin power plants.
And we've asked you to do that, and we've asked you to upgrade from the oil, coal, and oil that we used to have because it's environmentally the best solution for generating power in our plants, correct?
Yes, and we're going to be mandated to do that under AB 32, 1368, SB 1, 2021, a whole flurry of laws that have come from Sacramento.
And what is the cost of natural gas this year? What's happened to that price factor?
Oh, it's about, it's between eight and nine dollars per million British thermal unit. So it's gone up since 1998, it's gone up four or fivefold.
And a year or two ago, it was about fourteen, twelve to fourteen.
And I think that's a critical point, that this council, previous councils, saw that if we are going to make water and power invest in these newer technologies that are better for the environment we live in, there's a cost factor. And that cost factor adjusts on a daily basis, actually. Your cost factors adjust daily. And that if we didn't do this, our option is then to have a higher rate increase to project the cost of those things. Because at the end of the day, the ratepayer and all of us in this room, whether we're on the council or whether citizens, pay for that rate for the operations of water and power. And that's an operational cost that fluctuates greatly.
That's absolutely right. And this is why, this is why it was devised in this way, in a way that makes sure that the utility in the city can function by recovering the cost. But to protect the ratepayer by capping what can be passed through to the ratepayer. This is the system that is in place at this time.
And it was devised to allow the ability for you to move with the marketplace as needed, without coming back, asking for new rate increases all the time in volatile markets like we have for the last year.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
I think that's important for people to understand what ECAF does and how it relates to all of us, because we all pay that. It's not a surcharge at the cost of doing business, above and beyond the standard cost of business, which are salaries, which are basically fixed, which are other operational costs, trucks, materials, et cetera, which are basically fixed. This is a moving target every day, and that was put in to do that very thing.
And the neighborhood councils, to their great credit, understood this perfectly. And this is why they supported authorizing the ECAF but putting a cap on it. This discussion was held in great detail before that decision was arrived on.
And so I just want to bring that back. I think it was important for those watching, for those in the audience, that people understand, we've had these discussions, but to recap what it was and why it is, and that it's not something we threw in as a whammy and a trick. It's something that's been there for a while for a very specific reason that it's there. And I think that's important to understand. And that this whole matter is coming back to Ms. Perry's committee as a separate item totally, and it's not part of this discussion today, really. It's kind of something that was thrown up at the last minute to confuse people, I think. But it shouldn't confuse anybody, not a whole.
Yeah, we should not allow this to distract us from the immediate matter before us right now, which is investing in our infrastructure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you, Mr. Nahai, for going before the Westchester Neighborhood Council last night and two weeks ago, going before the Venice Neighborhood Council. And as we go forward, we're going to ask you to come before all of my neighborhood councils and also my joint Congress of councils over time to give us updates from time to time on exactly what's happening. But again, your transparency and your articulation yesterday won a lot of fans for you. And I got a lot of emails and phone calls from people that were very happy with what you said. And I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank Saladad Garcia and her leadership. When she came into the hallways a few months ago and came in my office, we sat and we talked. And your leadership and your coalition has had a major positive impact on the dialogue and the discussions and the issues that were presented. And thank you so much for your leadership. And Mr. Nahai, taking that spirit, we have clearly said over and over that we need oversight. Would you explain where we, as a council, have agreed, and I am strong on this, that each council office will designate a person from their neighborhood councils or the most articulate pit bull, like a Nick Patzouris, who's a pit bull over the fire facility, I mean, the police thing and everything else he touches. I'm going to get one of those pit bulls from the eleventh district. Explain how that oversight committee, in the spirit of Ms. Garcia and others, will function so that people have a sense of transparency and know that we are reinvesting in that infrastructure. I'm most concerned about the twelve thousand to fifteen thousand miles of old cable that was put in in the twenties and the thirties that must be replaced. And I saw all of what we experienced in Westchester as an alarm, as a wake-up call, as I know you have. Answer that for me, please.
As I understand it, the motion that was adopted last time we were here, and which is before you today, calls for the appointment of, I believe, three oversight committees. One of them is the civilian oversight committee, which would consist of individuals appointed by each council office. And I think, you know, as we go forward, you'll need to decide what qualifications you want to see in the person that you'll appoint. But I'm, you know, I'll pledge here to work with all of the oversight committees and to make sure that they fully understand the department's operations. For me, it's been actually an eye-opening experience to go around to the neighborhood councils and to speak with them. There is just so much that people don't understand about the department's operations, about this massive budget of four and a half billion dollars, about a workforce of eight thousand seven hundred people, about how we finance the projects that we do. But when I sat with them, and when I've discussed it with them openly, they've all understood it quite well. And I think many of them come up to me afterwards, and they say, if only we had known. So.
Well, that's always was my mission when I did those television shows, to inform and educate people. I don't care what point of view they end up with, but they have to know the facts. Mr. Patzouris?
Yeah, and we'd like to commit here that the oversight committee is adding to the commission's oversight. We have total access to our records and facts and findings. And I know Mr. Nahai will agree with me. So it's not going to be a war and a battle to access information. And we make that commitment here and now.
Great. And I want to thank Mr. Smith for fleshing out that whole issue there about the ECAF. You should go to television when you retire and do a television show. They're a lot of fun. Okay. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Mr. Weezer.
Dr. Weisman.
Thank you, Madam President. A lot has been said. I don't want to repeat a lot of what we've been. But let me tell you something. I mentioned this at the last meeting. I was kind of really disappointed in the process. We got to the point to raise from fifty percent to twenty percent for the low-income discount rate for the low-income residents. That showed me that we need a stronger commitment from DWP for these residents. You've heard it. I have a motion in to hear that item in my audits committee so that we get a plan, a better plan together. Mr. Alakon has introduced a motion to have an oversight committee to see how those funds are spent and how do we get better penetration. But what it comes down to is, if this is the way DWP communicates with council members, I'm concerned about how DWP communicates with a person like my mother, a person who does not speak English and a person who is a senior. And if we can't get the type of information that we're asking for, and it was like pulling teeth through this process, you know, it really leaves a lot to be desired. So we've done a lot. We need the money for the public infrastructure improvements. I'm still trying to figure out exactly what they are. I mean, I got a list yesterday. That's very difficult to decipher. We need to be able to explain to your average person in this city where their dollars are going, and a list like this just doesn't do it.
May I be, yeah, I thank you for that, Councilmember Weezer. And I discussed this issue with your chief of staff and actually attempted to contact you about it directly. You know, the motion that was adopted provided DWP with a thirty-day period in order to come back to you with the projects that are located within your district. In retrospect, we should have kept to the thirty-day period. I think staff, in attempting to please the council members, got out the list of the projects and sent them over. But the question to begin with, what are the projects within my district? And this goes to Mr. Councilmember Alakon's question earlier on, is I would submit, to begin with, a little misguided. And I've tried to impress this upon anybody who listens to me. And the reason it's misguided is because we divide the city into seven districts, not into fifteen districts.
I get it, Mr. Nahai. And this is by region, okay? It's not by district. And I understand, I'm not pushing for us to be parochial from our districts and see what we're getting, et cetera. It's useful information. But when we tell the public what projects are actually going out there, we get a list by district. It has a date on this side, some numbers here that we don't know, and just names of streets and addresses. We missed a big piece in the middle on how we got the word out through this process. And this should have been out in the beginning, before, when we started this process, asking for the ratepayers to pay more money. We should have, now that you gave the big picture to us what the need is, and then this thing should have been translated better so that we tell our neighborhood council members, we tell our public in better language, other than a list like this that doesn't really, nobody could decipher, perhaps only the person who wrote this in DWP. And it's by region. This needs to be better put out there for the public to understand, and it should have been done when we started this whole process.
Thank you. Ms. Alakon?
Members, we have nothing if we don't have the power of the vote. You know, the old saying, sticks and stones can break our bones, but words can never hurt me. Our sticks and stones are our vote. So the words that we say to be critical without action mean nothing. I think that if you are confident that this ordinance is something you believe in, that you believe that you have no concern about the seven percent transfer to the reserve fund out of the ECAF, based on the ECAF provisions in this bill, if you have no concern with voting the ECAF increases to July of 2009 into the rate, notwithstanding the fact that we were told this was only about improving the infrastructure, when in fact it includes the provisions for ECAF. And by the way, I don't have a problem with ECAF, per se, because if you want to get the cleaner energy, it's going to cost you a little more. And I don't mind passing that on. that on. What I don't like is the disingenuous manner in which we present this to the public. If you have a concern about the projects in your district, these projects that nobody can decipher, even a DWP employee couldn't tell you what this means by itself, if you have any concern, then don't vote for this. That's the only power you have. So I'm not going to vote for this, because my questions have not been answered. In fact, I have more questions than when we started this process. And I have no problem, I voted for rate increases in the past. It's just that the information in this particular vote is not being provided in a way that I can believe is trustworthy. And so I'm going to vote with the people of Los Angeles, I'm going to vote with the ratepayers, I'm going to vote with them, because I think they're equally as confused as I am about what exactly the ramifications of what we are doing here is. And so I think somebody needs to vote for them. And I mean no criticism to the leadership at DWP. This is a generational problem, dates back to Moholyng. This department thinks it can just run Ramrod over the public and take their money for the purposes of enriching folks, and we have not rooted that greed out of this system, and it will continue as long as we do not have the courage to vote against these actions.
Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to stand, Mr. Alarcon, I appreciate your remarks there. This is the opportunity we all have to speak to. People built this system, and the people of Los Angeles built this system over 100 years ago, and it needs to be rebuilt now. I would suggest to the department that if you could contact Gary Lee Moore, who does an excellent job putting out this information that is available to neighborhood councils, available to council offices, who the contact person is, because yes, I can relate to what Mr. Alarcon said, what Mr. Weezer said, that listing, that challenges. You got to sell it like Moholyng did. You got to sell it like Moholyng did. And also, I think it's real important that we are investing, and it's Mr. Smith, you made very clear points there, which is so important. We're like an octopus in this energy business and in this water business, we rely on many other factors, and factors that are above and beyond our control. And because they're above and beyond our control, to be fair to the ratepayers, to the investors in this system, you have to have those conditions in the rates, because all of a sudden then you can't provide the low-income breaks to people that are necessary. You can't provide the special work that is necessary, because all of a sudden, a line that we count on busts on Ventura Boulevard and floods portions of Sherman Oaks because of an old infrastructure. So I think it's important that we do that. And also, members, in all fairness, we have to read every line. We have to read every line of every document that we see, because that's how the public record is written, by every line. And it doesn't see, it does cost money to build a system. I know, Richard, you're voting for the people, I'm voting for the people, because I don't want the people to be out of power, and I don't beat the people that have 650 million gallons of water that you felt very bad about, had to be taken out of service because of a unique situation created by the climate condition and the East San Fernando Valley wells and all the history that goes to that. Quality water, reliable energy, and making sure that the people who work at the department know how important, which they do, to provide the service to the people of Los Angeles. I thank you, and I'm voting for the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Madam Clerk, if you could let us know how we will be voting and which items we'll be voting on first.
The first vote, Madam President, is a vote on the verbal motion amending items 15 and 16, and that's just asking for a report back. And the motion is by Councilmember Alarcon, seconded by Councilmembers Zine.
Well, we're going to do colleagues' vote on that separately, then 15 and 16, this is just the amendment to both of those. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the verbal motion by Mr. Alarcon, his amendment.
On the amendment.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes, thank you.
Next, Madam Clerk.
Next vote, Madam President, is item number 15, and that is for the power increase.
Okay. Colleagues, again, this is the power increase. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes, one no.
All right.
Thank you. Next item is item number 16, which is the water rate increase.
You remember.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes, three noes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Fourth with on that item. Madam Clerk, we are going to take items 48 and 49 next. We do have a motion that I'm not sure Mr. Cardenas has been delivered yet, it may be as we speak.
Madam President, the motion has been passed out, the substitute motion, on item 48, and if we could put item 49 over for a week.
Okay, well, 49 will be held over one week. Thank you. And acknowledge Mr. Cardenas on item number 49. Excuse me, 48.
48, yes. Thank you. Colleagues and people of Los Angeles, it has been noted far too often in the press about the gang violence that is going on in our streets, and in addition to that, it's been noted as well that there are different opinions about how the city should move forward when it comes to how we handle the programs within the city. It certainly is clear that we need to consolidate all of our gang intervention prevention and reentry programs and youth development programs, as well as that, we need to make sure that we coordinate in the future outside the city of Los Angeles with our county and all of the efforts that need to take place within the city and beyond. We need to do the work that needs to be done to make sure that we do this appropriately and effectively so that we have a better system. The system of today isn't working very well at all. The system of today is a convoluted hodgepodge of programs that have been put together over the last 30 years or so. So with that, what the main movement of this motion is that the mayor's office begin the consolidation and prevention of intervention and reentry anti-gang violence programs and services into one office within the office of the mayor, beginning on July 1st, and then in addition to that, come December 31st, 2009, the city council will review and determine the consolidation solution. So that is what we're doing today, the main effort. In addition to that, we will be also convening other efforts within the city with the CLA's office, the CAO's office, the city attorney, the council, and the mayor to work on the interim responsibilities that we have to make sure that these programs continue appropriately. In addition to that, we've all heard many, many times that the current controller, talking about how she has made a recommendation that we should consolidate these programs in the mayor's office, and that she will do performance audits, et cetera. I'm not here to talk at all about whether or not she can or can't do performance audits, but what needs to happen is we need to make sure that the proper oversight and accountability does happen, and which hasn't been happening in the past. So this motion does speak to the fact that the controller has offered to do these audits, and therefore it is in the motion as well. But also, what I'd like to do, so that people understand that when they read something in the press, as they did this morning in both the Los Angeles Times and the Daily News, and I'll quote the current controller, Laura Chick, and it quotes her as saying, "Any attempt to make the move to the mayor's office only temporary is a notion that is counterproductive and one which I will fight with every fiber in my being." And it's quoted as Chick said in her own written statement. But I want to move you to the actual words that Laura Chick said to the Ad Hoc Committee on Gangs and Youth Development just over a month ago, just about a month ago, and I quote her. "Always in my mind, the recommendation of putting these anti-gang programs in the mayor's office was not an indefinite conclusion. I'm hopeful at some point that the council and the mayor engage in assessing our entire department structure and whether it's really serving the 21st century demographics of the city in the same way it was when we invented these departments 40, 50, 60 years ago." And at such time, when the council and mayor do that and look at potentially coordinating departments, merging some together, redoing things, that there might be a better place to put this. The recommendation to put it in the mayor's office now, quite frankly, is really more stepping back and looking at where we are, where we have come from over the last decades. How are we doing? Can we leave it the way it is? And the answer was resounding no. So in a sense, it's potentially temporary housing until it gets healed, until it gets coordinated. It could end up being its own department, it could end up that maybe you recognize the departments, so there is actually a Department of Youth Services, end quote. That is what the controller said in her initial recommendation. She has said this in one version or another, over and over and over for the last eight weeks. Whether she changes her mind or not is her business, and that is her opinion, that is her right. But the fact of the matter is, we've been working, us as council members, we've been working with the mayor's office of trying to figure out how to transition this into the mayor's office. I believe that today's motion does in fact take care of that in a very responsible manner. I want to thank everybody who's been working toward this day, I want to thank them very much, and I want to say as well that if you look at this document, it makes it very clear. If in fact, through the next 18 months, things work out so well, then perhaps it will remain in the mayor's office, and appropriately so, by the proof and the work that has been done over the next 18 months. In addition to that, it could be that we come up with another solution, but we will come up with a responsible solution with the facts to back it and a solution that will make a system that will be much, much better than the system we've had in the past, and a system that is based on the numbers, a system that is based on the facts, and a system that will have permanency for all the right reasons. The hodgepodge of non-permanent way in which we do things today needs to end, and this is the first step in doing so. And once again, I'd like to thank all of you who have been working toward this day, want to thank you very much. And also, at the same time, I must remind every single one of us, the work is not done, there's much work to do, there's going to be more engagement from the mayor's office, more engagement from this council, more engagement from the community, such as the Community Advisory Committee that has been put together with the community, and many, many more people beyond. The work is not done. It has begun many months ago, and it will continue, but we will be stepping up the efforts from this day forward like you've never seen before. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you to our Chair, Tony Cardenas, who really has done a yeoman's job. The testimony that we had come here in these council chambers was probably, I think, the most crowded I've ever seen these chambers for a committee meeting. And the work that you're continuing to do to make our gang intervention prevention and reentry work accountable, transparent, and unified has been really critical. This council commissioned the Rice Report, which gave us the ways of defining and holding accountable programs, which really were an accident in many ways of history. The blueprint of the controller built on that as well. We've seen work within the Ad Hoc Committee and from friends that are not part of the city of Los Angeles. And I really want to emphasize how important LAUSD and the county are going to be to our long-term youth violence prevention solutions. But I'm proud to be a seconder of this motion, along with many of you, today with Councilmember Cardenas, because the consolidation, we all have believed in, doing it the right way is the most critical piece, and that's what this does. It also lays forward that we don't just fixate on the consolidation, but the substance of the work, which is what Mr. Cardenas has been focused on. And I have to say, the motions in here that he has moved on, that the Ad Hoc Committee clearly define intervention and prevention program goals and objectives, completes its work on guidelines for the establishment of professional standards for intervention workers, and we love our intervention workers, but we have to ask of them what we ask of everybody, that they have those standards that hold themselves accountable, developing the protocols for the continued participation of the community, and the implementation strategy of a community-based gang intervention model. That's what we're talking about here today, is at that community level, whether it's Glissel Park, whether it's East Hollywood, whether it's in the valley, South LA, in the Harbor area, how can we finally get young people to have the resources they need, the places to be, the job training, the intervention, the health care, the family support? And the time has come for us to stop doing this in a shotgun approach. And I use that metaphor purposely, we were doing this in a shotgun approach, and the result is young people who have been dying. And Tony Cardenas has put this forward, the controller has helped light the fire. We have had a wonderful deputy mayor in Jeff Carr, who has shown the mayor's priority, and we're very much looking forward, in the budget process this year, to this consolidation occurring, while we keep our charter responsibilities, as the controller keeps her charter responsibilities. And I would add one thing just orally on the further move of the city controller piece, that the follow-up performance audits is agreed to by the mayor's office, because that's the way the charter has worked and what Mr. Cardenas has pointed out in committee. But we will continue to do that, and I have to just end on this. The frustration that community members, that members of the press, that political leaders and other people feel, where they want to say, "Give us the solution and make the violence stop tomorrow." We all feel that. Every single one of us around this horseshoe has seen in these chambers the parents of somebody who have lost their son or daughter. We have held those people, we have paid for the funerals of the young people, we have spent more of our emotional time and energy, I think, on this issue than probably anything else in those areas that are beset by gang violence. I certainly have myself. And there's no group of people that cares more about this issue in the policy arena than this city council. It's the reason we have this ad hoc, it's the reason we've commissioned these two studies. It's also the reason that we are working together with this mayor, who has prioritized this more than any other mayor, to put the past behind us and to finally figure out how we can not only get the right model, but the resources, and this will be the transition to Ms. Hahn, who has been just a stellar leader, looking at November, of how we can get the resources in place to complement what Mr. Cardenas is doing in the consolidation with the mayor's office. And we will keep our own feet to the fire, because too many young people have been losing their lives. It is the tragedy of this city, and it took us 20 or 30 or 40 years to get here, but it's not going to take us that long to get out. This is a great step forward, and congratulations, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, and I just really want to rise in support of this motion today, and really want to thank those in the mayor's office, and certainly thank our President Eric Garcetti and Tony Cardenas for his incredibly difficult job that I think he's performed so well in guiding all of us to this point. And I appreciate your words, President Garcetti, because I think that's really kind of what I'm feeling today, is that for me, this issue of trying to end gang violence in Los Angeles has absolutely been something that I can never not think about. I think about it when I wake up, I think about it when I go to bed, I think about it when I pray, I think about it every Monday when I'm in Watts with my Watts Gang Task Force, I think about it when I'm in Harbor Gateway and can't forget the tragic death of young Sheryl Green. I think about it all the time, and I do know that the media has portrayed our discussions here as something not positive, and I disagree with that. I disagree with that. I think we are all extremely passionate about this issue, and I feel badly for those, some of those in the public who come here and have a sense that we don't care, or take maybe our time during public comment as any kind of an indication that we are not deeply, deeply troubled by this. No one who has been given the responsibility to help lead and make decisions for the second largest city in this country can ever not be extremely troubled by what gang violence is doing to Los Angeles, what it's doing to our image, what it's doing to the business community. So I think all of us care very, very deeply about it. And we've done some difficult work to get us to this point, and Tony has done the majority of that work in his leadership position on our Ad Hoc Committee for gang violence, and I want to thank him for this. And I think this does, this motion does exactly what the people have asked us to do and what the people deserve. That's putting, reconfiguring, reorganizing all of the programs that we do in the city to try to reach our young people, putting them in the mayor's office, but then stepping back next year and taking a look at how it worked. How did it all work? Maybe there's some more tweaking that we need to do. And I think the public wants us to hold our gang intervention workers, our gang prevention workers, our after-school workers, they want us to hold these people accountable, and so do we, because frankly, we've never done that, and we never really had a way to do that. We were really sort of just trying to attempt to control this problem in a way that wasn't very organized and wasn't very accountable, but it didn't mean that we didn't care about the issue. It just meant, I think, up until this time, we weren't really sure how to manage it. But now, I think because of the controller's report, because of Connie Rice's report, because of Tony Cardenas's work, we now have what I think is a roadmap, a blueprint, on how we go about it. But that doesn't mean that's the end of it. We have to continue to ask for controller audits, we have to continue to make sure that we hold groups accountable, and we will not fund groups that don't come back and show us the results that we're asking for. What have you done to keep these kids from joining gangs? What have you done to keep these kids from joining gangs? That's the question we have to ask everybody. So in November, when we do ask voters if they would agree to give us three dollars a month to go to fund more after-school programs, more intervention workers, more job training programs, then we can look them in the eye and say, "We are accountable, we will hold your tax dollars accountable, and we will not waste a dime as we move forward to finally end gang violence." And council members, I'm proud of us. I am proud of us for this day. I am very proud of us, and I think we have a chance, we have a chance to grow up the next generation of kids that won't join a gang. And that, I believe, coupled with our strong law enforcement agencies, that we really will solve the gang violence problem in Los Angeles. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your leadership, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker. After that, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Zine, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Labange, and Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Gruel, for your courtesy. First, I want to thank Councilmember Cardenas for an incredible job. His tenacity and his patience has shone throughout, and I know it takes an emotional toll on many of us, many of us who think about, when will that next parent come to that podium and talk about a heinous crime or an incredible loss? And I think about what we have as discretion. We have moved forward, this whole notion of jobs, that is in front of us, colleagues. We can ask the mayor today, how is he holding the department heads accountable in moving contracts and moving our own resources back into our community when they make available job slots for our youth today? Complementing the work of Councilman Cardenas means that we each assess, I believe, not only in the context of this committee work, but in the context of our discretion and our respective chair role in each one of our committees. But every time we ask ourselves, did we allow for that housing to be built in my district? Did we create opportunities for families to be living their parts? Were we able to commit to that nonprofit and that for-profit, where they can show that some of the kids that are growing up and squalor because there are three families in one-bedroom apartments, because they have nowhere else to go? Did we make those commitments? All of those decisions incrementally adds to our ability to take away the influence of the gangs. It's about the quality of life that we generate as policymakers. We have that. Yesterday, Councilman Perry's role in being creative with the billboards and creating a park space is a direct example of how we have that discretion. So you're right, Councilmember Hahn, it just doesn't stop here. It's not just about putting forth together a proposition that talks about resources, but each one of us in your district, Councilmember Gruel's district, Councilman Smith's district, my district, we all have different opportunities of how we create this relief that really disarms the gangs, and that's something we have today. So let's continue supporting Councilman Cardenas, but every time you get that housing proposal or we get the ability to put forth an institution that speaks to serving youth, let us not have the knee-jerk reaction saying it's too controversial, but let's challenge it, let's engage it, so that the youth in our city will have a future to complement, because it's not going to be enough. Even with this department, it's not going to be enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Reyes. I know you stayed an extra hour as well today to be here and to speak. Colleagues, I rise in support of the motion that is before you. Last week, in the AGE Committee, we adopted actually language that did say that the city council instruct the CAO in consultation with the various departments to prepare recommendations to consolidate youth and family anti-gang programs into one office reporting directly to the mayor, and subject to required Controller audits every six months. So the motion that Mr. Cardenas has introduced is consistent with the motion that we adopted last week in AGE and work beginning. We all know in each of our different council districts and across the city, because we hear, and I think Ms. Perry has been one of the most eloquent in her bringing directly to us the sadness and the impact that gang violence has had on her community particularly. All too often, she's had to stand and introduce us to individuals who have lost their families and their individuals. And so before us, as we want to make sure that there is accountability, and if there's one thing I hear from the constituency out there who is concerned about gang violence is, we need to do something to hold individuals accountable, we need to make sure that we have that consolidation. And as Mr. Alarcon and I have talked about, because we are members of the Tom Bradley family over the years, we lived in an environment in the mayor's office where it was very effective to have that control and that management of various issues, where the department heads really did respond. I think Mr. Zine was quite eloquent as well in our committee about how important that is to have one voice and the ability to do that. And so we think that for us to address the gang violence that is increasing on a daily basis and a deadly impact on our communities, that we have to do something to do this. This will help us move forward now, and with the recommendations of the Gang Committee on some of the specific requirements and the reviews, the two other motions that I had introduced did look at implementing what Laura Chick has done and Connie Rice, two people who took a very long time in which to prepare their reports and put them forward and give us a roadmap in which we could operate and to do that, and I want to thank them for their leadership on that. So colleagues, this is consistent with what we had proposed and adopted by in the AGE Committee before. The time is now, not for talk, but for action, and to begin immediately to do that, and I have the utmost of confidence in Jeff Carr, as the gangs are within the mayor's office, who is committed to this issue. And we need to stop talking, get ready, and consolidate there in the mayor's office. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I'm glad that we came to a conclusion on this, and I know that looking at today's Los Angeles Daily News, twelve killed by LAPD in 2008, it shows that there's violence in our community, and the headline reflects twelve killed by LAPD in 2008. The first quarter this year, police killed twelve suspects, twice the number of suspects killed over the same period last year. That's a frightening statistic, but our officers obviously have to protect themselves, and when we have this gang activity, we need to curtail and eliminate. And I know that we have Reverend Jeff Carr with us in chambers, listening to this, and I'm curious to see if we have a representative from the Controller's Office, and if we do, I'd like to bring him forward. And I know that there's been some articles about this. We're all on the same page. We want to make this a safe city, we want to eliminate gang violence, we want to pull together and make it work. The proposal that Mr. Cardenas has brought forward, and I want to commend Mr. Cardenas for the time he's put in on this, also acknowledge a former colleague, Martin Ludlow, who originally started this, and it's continued, and there's been a long time invested in this, a lot of people, a lot of participation. Finally, I think we have a product that we can do something with. The Controller's Office supports this proposal that's being brought forward?
Yes, Rushmore Cervantes with the City Controller's Office. As Controller Chick had mentioned, this is probably the most important report of her Controller career, so she was impassioned with the results of the study and desperately wants to see the recommendations move forward with consolidating all of these services. There was some discussions about potentially moving it into a new department, potentially at eighteen months, having a sunset clause where the council would move it into a new department. The Controller did mention something about temporary. There's no certainty that this ultimately will work in the mayor's office. The fact of the matter is, we first of all need to consolidate the resources, that's a given. But putting a sunset clause on when services would be moved from the mayor's office to a department, we didn't agree with that whatsoever. You can't put a timeframe on that. And if, in fact, the services are working efficiently and functioning properly in the mayor's office, then it should be left in place. So the motion that was introduced, we've looked at it, and we certainly agree with it, the council, with the authority that it does have, should look at it. The Controller is going to be looking at the progress every six months, have a more extensive report after eighteen months, and the council should look at this and see what, you know, how the services are functioning and make some decisions at that point. As Councilman Cardenas indicated, if things are working great, so be it. If they're not, then the council, with its authority, should look at other alternatives as well. But the point is to move it into one entity where it has the level of authority at the mayor's office level, where you can not only engage other city departments to get proper coordination, but also in the regional areas with the county, the sheriff's department, whatnot. And having it in the mayor's office, and have that kind of marquee and leadership at the top, that's where we think it's going to prove to be successful.
So we discussed this in committee, and the discussion regarding the ability of the mayor to tell the general manager what to do versus the general manager asking another general manager to assist, participate. So I think that we're all on the same page. I know I've read these articles in the paper, and what I hope we can do, come away with this after this vote, is to move forward with this, invest the money, let Jeff Carr move forward with his vision to bring about safety, security, tranquility in our community, so we don't have to put our officers through the shooting investigations and cause the situation in the community where we have this continuing saga of violence.
Absolutely, with transparency.
Exactly.
There will be transparency, the Controller's Office will be auditing it, the council will be looking at those reports and making some determinations at some point down the road as to the progress as well.
And I think what we've seen in the history since we've been trying to do intervention, and Ms. Hahn has the idea about the bond measure to a partial assessment to additional dollars, we've invested millions upon millions upon millions of dollars, a lot of social service organizations have funded themselves with dismal results, and I think what we have now is the opportunity to go forward, and those that work has been stated, we will continually fund, and those that don't work will be eliminated from the program so we can get the results that we want. We're investing money, I just don't think we've been getting the return on our dollar, and hopefully this will bring about that positive impact, that positive change for all the people of Los Angeles. So I wanted to make sure the Controller's Office was on board. Thank you for being here for your comments.
Certainly.
And Jeff Carr, I know you're around here someplace. He's holding his back to the wall. He doesn't want to talk, he just wants to, I want to congratulate him, because I know he's got a large mission to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, and our next speaker is Mr. Weezer, after that is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and throughout the discussions we've had on this issue the last few months, I think what the public was looking for, what the newspapers were looking for, was a certain path as to what direction the city was going to take to resolve this. And in fact, we've had a lot of research, Connie Rice's report, Controller Chick added to that, and I think what everyone was looking for is like, okay, we have this out there. Now, council, you're the legislative body of the city, make a decision, move forward, tell us what we're doing. We may agree or disagree with it, but what direction are we going? I think this does that for us. And I want to thank Councilmember Tony Cardenas for all the work he's put into his Ad-Hoc Committee, and in fact, if you think of the discussion that is going on, I don't think there's another major city in the city of Los Angeles that is having this type of discussion as the city is. In fact, the Ad-Hoc Committee adopted a gang intervention model that will clearly delineate and give guidelines as to who is a gang interventionist and how are we going to insert them on the fight on gangs. That is something that is new, it's innovative, and it's pioneer. It's some work that's being done here in the city of Los Angeles, that's some pioneer work. A lot of work has been going on, and like Mr. Cardenas said, a lot more has to be done. I think this gives us that. When I first heard about whether we should put this in the mayor's office, without really jumping and saying I agree or disagree with it, I thought to myself, well, I like the idea because it's going to give it a bit more highlight, one voice of accountability, one person who could direct whether we're doing this right or wrong. But I was also concerned that if we say we're going to give a lot more money to anti-gang efforts, prevention and intervention, how can we allow the mayor's office to continue to balloon this one section of his office as we continue to pour millions and millions of dollars to address this issue? So I think what this motion does today actually takes care of those problems. It's saying, we're recognizing this is an urgent problem, we need one person accountable in this city, it is a priority. Mayor, you're going to address this, but in eighteen months, we're going to again ask the question, should we continue in the mayor's office, or should we establish a more permanent department to do it? Nobody has the answer right now. I was actually kind of laughing to myself as we went through this process, because nobody really had enough information before them to really make that decision. I thought we should first consolidate the programs, and in that process, we could probably make that decision. But I think what we are doing today by putting it in the mayor's office is saying, it is of such urgency and importance, the mayor is going to lead this effort for now. Later on, we evaluate it, we don't know where it will go. But I'm predicting that if we are true to providing more resources for gang prevention and intervention, we're going to have so much money flowing there, hopefully, that we eventually will have to move in a different direction. I don't know when that will be or what they will look like, but I think we'll be in a better position to make that decision a few months from now. So I want to thank everyone who's put some of their hands on this. Controller Laura Chick helped highlight this issue a bit more, and he doesn't like me calling him a gangsar, but Jeff Carr, our deputy chief, will certainly be out there. I know he's doing a lot of work in my district, where we have implemented a new gang reduction zone. It's a really hot area right now, and for us to put more attention from the mayor's office in that area is making a difference, and I hope the direction we go with this motion will do the same throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we can actually reconsider item forty-nine, we're going to take these up together, the substitute is actually forty-nine, not forty-eight. We're going to hear public comment, don't worry, Mr. Mars. So if we can just open the roll and reconsideration of that, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen aye.
Those are both before us. Mr. Rosendahl will be our next speaker, and we will make sure we get to public comment, don't worry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I always have, since I've been on the council, remember Augustine Contreras, who was a young man who turned seventeen years old just a few days before he was gunned down in the Venice parking lot. In fact, some of you know me personally, how I look at this passing-on business, and I pray to Augustine Contreras every single morning since then, and in that part of the prayer, I ask God to find ways in which we can work on this gang issue. First of all, Ms. Hahn, that parcel tax has to happen, you need that thirty million for after-school intervention and prevention programs. It's a no-brainer, and the people will support you on a motion that directs it right into where it needs to go, which is prevention and intervention. I want to thank Mr. Cardenas. I'll never forget, as long as I live, his emotional moment here on the council floor when he talked about his boy getting into his car and having to skateboard somewhere else other than in the immediate neighborhood where they live. I mean, this is for real an issue for absolutely every one of us. I want to thank the mayor. The mayor understands the issues of gangs, and I think his desire and his leadership to step up to the plate and let the buck stop there is exactly the right direction to go. I want to thank Connie Rice for her voluminous report, where she talked about all the silos and right-hand, left-hand, and no real coordination, cooperation, or accountability that came out within that process. Connie's right, the buck has to stop, but the buck doesn't just stop with the mayor. It stops with the fifteen of us here in the council, as well as the other elected officials. We will constantly be engaged in this issue, day to day, week to week, month to month. I know in my budget committee reports, we will get updates, we will get understandings, and all the other committees obviously need to do the same thing. So we all feel comfortable that we're moving in the right direction. There is still a big issue that we can't deal with, but we have to let the feds know that the damn war on drugs is a war on people, and if they didn't have the dumb drug laws, these kids wouldn't be able to make all that money selling that illegal product out there that creates this territory issue that they constantly fight over. So we need to rediscuss that in Washington. What do we really do? Health, addiction issues, or criminal issues, and how does that fit in with the price of these drugs, which is part of the driving force of these territorial gangs? It's another day, another issue, but we can't lose sight of that fact. And I lastly want to thank everybody in the room here for their sincerity and their hard work, and I know we're all going to vote in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Labange is next.
Mr. Cardenas, I appreciate your comments over the time and your passion, and I also want to say, members, I think it is the right thing to do. Many of the departments that we have in the city now started. Housing was an office in Tom Bradley's administration for many years. It was an office, and now it's more focused as a department. Environmental Affairs, I believe, was in the CAO's office at the time. Youth Development was in the mayor's office. I think this is all very important. Now that it's in, this site is there, and I would just say, whether it's eighteen months or thirty-six months, whatever this council decides, we move forward on, but I think the important thing is consolidation and focus. I also want to thank all those who did the work outside this building and continue to do it. to do the work to try to really change the flow of what has been a constant challenge of Los Angeles, of alienation of young people who resort to violence, who destroy their own lives and the lives of others. Thank everyone who's involved. Now the hard work begins, as many of you have all said.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon.
Passion is something that, as you all know, I very much believe in. You put the passion of Laura Chick and Tony Cardenas together, and things happen. So I want to commend both of them for caring so deeply about this issue. I also, following on Wendy Grill's comments, talk about being, I was the mayor's gang programs liaison. And in 1981, when I was assigned to monitor the countywide gang task force and the inter-agency project that we had put together, the focus on the gang issue was in the mayor's office. So we are coming full circle. There's a huge difference, however. And that difference is that the funding always remained in the Community Development Department. The funding that really had the power to have the impact to address the multiplicity of causes for gang violence and the issues that are raised remained in the Community Development Department. Here's the kicker, colleagues. The reason it remained in the Community Development Department was because council members felt, under a previous charter, they felt they had more control of the resources in the Community Development Department than they would if the resources went to the mayor's office and had to negotiate with the mayor. It was very political, and it was wrong. It was wrong because we had a mayor who was willing to step forward and take claim of the issue. But we also had a council that would not empower him with the resources he needed to make it happen. When we shifted gears and went toward the L.A. Bridges Program, which I opposed, quite frankly, I voted for it because they allowed me to be exempt from the program in the 7th Council District, and we did whatever we wanted to do. I opposed it because I felt the strategy shifted from an intervention strategy to a prevention strategy. But one of the things it did was, it again made it unclear as to the role of the mayor's office in terms of the gang program. The bottom line is, we have come full circle. Mr. Cardenas has led us back to where we need to be structurally, with a mayor who is willing to be accountable on the issues of gangs, is willing to accept the responsibility for performance in terms of the programs that are underneath the programs that his office will now oversee. And we have a council member who speaks on behalf of all of us as a council to say we are willing to give him that power. That's the second part of this, because this is not the be-all and end-all. This is merely a structural shift. We are saying now and declaring that the mayor's office will be the vanguard on the issues of gangs, of course, in partnership with us. But the second step is to provide those resources. Primarily, they come from CDD, but they come from elsewhere as well. I only ask my colleagues that when the time comes and those agencies come to you, to lobby you for services in their district, for funding that comes through CDD, that you have the courage to stand up and say, we are committed to have the mayor manage this program and be held accountable to this program. I need to be held accountable to that program. And so that is the next step. Now that we have moved this to the mayor's office, you can bet there will be scrambling amongst the human service providers in our community that benefit from our funds. And they will start jockeying, positioning, and knocking on your doors and calling your phone. I know they've already done that. They do it to me, too. I ask you to try to balance this equation. It's something that is the most difficult thing, to distinguish between services that should go for preschool kids or to kids that may have had a single offense is the kind of tough decision that we will have to make individually and collectively. But we have to commend Councilman Cardenas for putting that before us because we can no longer say no to that issue. It is a political question, but more importantly, it is a question of whether or not we truly get a handle on the gang problem. I commend the mayor also for stepping up and saying he wants to be held accountable to this issue. And I commend my brother, Tony Cardenas, for stepping forward and being willing to marshal this thing in a way that makes more sense than at any time since I've been working for the city of Los Angeles in 1981. And so let's continue this process. Let's empower the department, the entity in the mayor's office that is ultimately responsible for the resources, with real resources to be able to have true impact. And maybe, just maybe, we can reduce the terror in our streets that is created by gang violence.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. We'll take a card from Candido Maris, and then we'll come back for Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this because, as you know, this has affected my family since 1991. And I just want to say this very clearly. Stephanie McKeon, the young lady that was killed in 1995, Mr. Hernandez remembers her because she drove down the wrong street and her family was, she was killed and her family was shot at. Cheryl Green, the young lady, just a couple of years ago, she's crying tears of joy because we, this council, this council is finally doing something. Mrs. Perry, the young people that you brought, the families that you brought last week, their children are crying tears of joy because of what's happening here. And I can speak of it because I know what it's like, and Mr. Smith knows the tragedies that my family have suffered. And Mr. Cardenas, I want to thank you because you and I have had differences. We've had differences. But when it came to this issue, your heart was into this. You believed in this. And no matter what, we may disagree on other issues, I'm very proud of what took place today. And I'm also proud of Ms. Chick because I believe together you became better, and I believe that this council is going to do more. And so today, I will sit down and I will, you should be proud of yourself. I'll give you the biggest hand because I've been here since 1991, and these are the things that we've been waiting for, for a long time. Because you're right, our children are going to be safer because of what you're doing today. So thank you very much for that, and we appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you very much, Candido. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Labonge, and then Mr. Cardenas to close.
Just a quick question. The ad hoc committee, where will all the matters of this be? Will it be in the Public Safety Committee? Or will it be in ad hoc committee? What is the transition on that matter?
Well, there's different parts of the motion. Mr. Cardenas, maybe sum some of it up. Some of it is continuing in the ad hoc committee, and some of it is implemented right away as we take this vote today.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you. I'm glad you brought up that question, Tom, because as I said earlier, much of the work that we need to do has just begun. We're going to be moving into another phase of activity. And part of the motion on the second page speaks to the issues the ad hoc committee is going to take on in the subsequent less than 90 days between now and July 1st. So the fact of the matter is, I'm glad you brought that up for the main reason is, this is, there is no silver bullet to end violence. There is no silver bullet when it comes to ending gang violence in this city or in this country. But what we must do is make sure that we do a better job of creating the system that is responsible, it is accountable, it is consolidated, and that we do the most that we can with the people's resources. And on top of that, once we do that, we do need to recognize the fact that only putting about $3.5 million across this city of 4 million people, only $3.5 million into intervention programs is not enough. The fact of the matter is, we have over, close to $1.4 billion going to the police department. And within the police department, they are tasked with 99% of the responsibility of the suppression activity in this city. Now, they have a lot more to work with, so therefore, they probably have a lot more results to speak of. But when you give one of the components in this, as Chief Bratton mentioned in this room, he said, we have a three-legged stool, and that three-legged stool is off balance. Well, part of that balance is making sure that we get our house in order and that we start building those other legs of those stools responsibly. And we are going to have to do that. We have to reckon with the fact that only putting $3.5 million in intervention, only having 61 intervention workers, when people claim that we have as many as 40,000 gang members in this city, is ridiculous. So the fact of the matter is, the work, in some senses, has just begun. The mayor and his team need to be ready to understand that this is an overwhelming task, and this is something that we're going to have to work together on to make sure that we, as a city, are successful, that we, the mayor, we, the council, we, the people who've been elected to take on the charge of responsibility in this city, that we work together and make the best of it. And this is the best we can do today. It took a lot of hard work to put this motion together. This motion is multifaceted, but at the same time, don't be mistaken by the idea that this motion is some way the end of the work. In some ways, this is just the beginning of much of the work that has been started, the beginning of much of the work that needs to happen. And with all due respect, there's going to be, hopefully, some wonderful motions and ideas in the short, in the near future, that are actually bringing to light better, innovative ways in which we can combat this issue. So, Tom, thank you for asking that question. The ad hoc committee will continue to handle these issues. I hope there comes a day where the ad hoc committee doesn't have to exist.
Thank you very much, and that was our last comment. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and everybody else for your comments on this. We have before a substitute which is actually supposed to be for 49, so I'd like to amend that to make it substitute for 49A, not 48A. If we can take the vote on 49.
Mr. President, do you wish to?
We have to vote on whether to substitute, correct? Okay. So the first vote is not a vote on the motion, it's a vote whether or not to substitute. That requires 10 votes. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is now substituted, and now we will vote on the motion. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is passed. That is approved, and we will send that forthwith to the mayor for his signature without objection. All right. Thank you. And item 48 is the one you wanted to continue, Mr. Cardenas? Okay. For one week, we will continue item 48. Thank you all very much. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item 14, and that was called especially by Councilmember Rosendahl.
All right, Mr. Rosendahl, we have item 14.
You just about left the room, didn't you?
I know. Good thing you made that U-turn. It was the illegal dumping investigation. Sorry, or Ms. Hahn, did you call that?
She did.
Okay. Ms. Hahn?
I did.
Your item.
Thank you. I didn't know if Gary Harris.
Yeah, he's here.
Gary's still here. Gary's still here. Colleagues, what we have before us is an ordinance which would actually give our street service investigators the protection that we give our peace officers. This is about illegal dumping, and, you know, one of the worst problems in Los Angeles. I have a terrible chronic illegal dumping problem in my district, particularly in Watson, Wilmington. And our street youth inspectors are the ones that kind of do the stings. They go out there all times of the night. They've caught people in the act of illegal dumping. And, you know, it's just such a problem, and they've arrested 1,100 people since we started to increase the enforcement for illegal dumping in 2002. But we think that this ordinance will really give them the protection that they need. And again, just to reiterate the issue, 120,000 cubic yards of debris was picked up just in South Los Angeles alone, which is like half of the city's total. We spent $12 million cleaning up illegal dumping last year. Again, that's money. Wouldn't it be great if we didn't have to use that money to clean up illegal dumping? And a lot of what we found, I think 94% of the people that we've caught doing illegal dumping are from outside the city of Los Angeles. And what happens, these people come into our communities, most of the time late at night, after midnight, and they illegally dump in our communities. And it is such a crime that really affects everybody. I know young kids who, you know, day in and day out have to walk past these huge piles of illegally dumped materials on their way to school, on their way home. And it just really diminishes, I think, people's quality of life in a severe way. And it diminishes people's image of themselves when they think, this is where I live. I have to live in a place that people use as a dumping ground. It just, it hurts so much of what we're doing to try to give our young people positive role models in life. So I support this ordinance, and maybe Gary can talk a little bit about what it does, why our street inspectors need this ordinance, and then I hope you'll support it like I do because I really appreciate what they do. I want to give them the protection they need from being sued, from being injured. And they're out there doing some really tough work with, you know, some criminals who would want to cause them harm, I'm sure, in one way or another. So why don't you tell us a little bit more about this before we vote? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Gary Harris from the Bureau of Street Services. To put illegal dumping in perspective, in the southeast area alone, in the 2006, 2007 fiscal year, the city removed the equivalent of over 1,200 dump trucks of illegal dumping that cost over $1 million in that one portion of the city. Citywide, the cost of mitigating illegal dumping tops $11 million. So it's a very significant issue. Street services investigators are at the forefront of enforcing the state and local laws related to illegal dumping. One of the issues that has arisen since we've started our successful program of arresting these illegal dumpers is the fact that there are some legal challenges to the limited authority currently granted under Section 836.5 of the Penal Code. The matter before you today will correct these by allowing street services investigators the authority granted by Section 830.7J, a bill that was supported by the city of Los Angeles, Assembly Bill 1688, that became law in 2007. This will simply enact that proposal under city ordinance. We will make our ordinance match the enabling state law. It will allow investigators full civil liability protection when making misdemeanor or felony arrests related to illegal dumping. It also grants extended protection from battery and assault by making a battery assault against these employees, the same as against other enforcement employees such as lifeguards, traffic officers, police officers, animal control officers, that the penalty would be enhanced so that we hope it would deter violent actions against these investigators.
Right. I think that's right. So, colleagues, what we're doing is, again, giving these street inspectors the full liability protection as peace officers when they're performing these arrests. And if, in fact, they are injured in the act of performing these arrests, they will be able to, again, we'll be able to go after those that perpetrated that injury on them just as we would be able to go after someone who perpetrated an injury on a police officer. This, to me, gives them the respect, the dignity, the protection that they deserve. They're out there in a very, very risky area. They're really on the front lines of this war on illegal dumping. We know our LAPD resources are thin. There's usually not LAPD officers around to make those arrests at that moment. So this is another tool that I think we in the city of Los Angeles can use against a crime that really encroaches on so many neighborhoods and on so much of the quality of life of people that live in those neighborhoods. So I support this. And I hope you do, too.
Mr. Labonge?
Ms. Hahn, thank you very much. You've been a champion of this aspect. It is about public safety and about public works. Together, it makes a difference. Gary, I hate to claim the title, but is Duran Street still the number-one dumping location?
Actually, our enforcement has lowered it on the list.
Good. That's good news. That's good news. I hope it's way lowered, and I know you use cameras there, too. So I appreciate that. I think it's very important that we do this, members. There's a lot we can do with the city. I know we're going through a change period because of the budget crisis, but the Public Works inspectors, if given more strength, given more numbers, could be an effective tool. I only wish we could use Prop O so they could get everybody who doesn't clean up after their selves and their neighbors and their businesses to give citations like we give street cleaning citations. You know what percentage of tickets we give, Ms. Hahn, that are street cleaning citations? Out of 100% of tickets, you know how many are street cleaning? 24.9% are street cleaning because dirty streets. Inspectors need this tool. I hope we could come back with another ordinance that you could give a citation right to somebody for littering or in the act of not cleaning up. Thank you, Ms. Hahn, for your leadership. Members, I ask for an aye vote. And as always, thank Mr. Rosendahl, the Public Works Chair, following the Public Works Chair, Meredith Smith, in this effort.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, how are you doing today? A couple of quick things. First of all, what kind of notice will people get about things that might now be, for them, an issue? Is there going to be some notice going out? People People going to be aware of it? For instance, you and I have talked about the bins, the construction bins, that are, some of them are illegal out there, some of them take up half the street, some of them are there too long. My constituents almost every day talk about leaf blowers and all the issues with leaf blowers, and why isn't that enforced? And then there's obviously illegal signs that people put up. You know, when Ms. Hahn did this motion and Mr. Labange seconded, that was December, and a few months later, we put this before the committee. It was unanimous that we acted on this thing, because it all makes sense to us. But give me some help on those issues.
Well, those are certainly difficult issues as with illegal dumping. One of the things that we have proposed to increase the enforcement of illegal dumping is another amendment to our municipal code that will allow us to do monetary fines that will fund more of the educational and enforcement work related to illegal dumping, illegal signage. The bin enforcement, we also are working with the city attorney on amending the ordinance that would allow the impounding of the bins somewhat similar to what is done with the parking enforcement rules now.
If I could make it just a quick friendly amendment to all this ordinance, which I'm totally pleased about, is that we get a report back in six months to the committee as to what activity we've found, what kind of action we took, and if there's any additional teeth you need in an ordinance to continue moving down that path. But in six months, give us a report to Public Works Committee. If I could have a second on that?
Accept it as a friendly amendment with 20 seconds.
Thank you.
All right. All right. The math is a little off there, but more or less. Mr. Zine is our last speaker.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We stay here a little longer, it'll be good evening. What kind of equipment do you folks have to protect yourselves?
Currently, we use OC spray. We have ballistic vests. Investigators carry handcuffs and cool pants.
That's it?
That's it.
What about radio communication?
We have limited access to the DOT frequency during peak hours.
Of the what?
During peak hours, we have access to DOT's communication.
So, what communication?
DOT.
DOT. Is there any connection and any coordination between you and the LAPD?
On stakeouts, we are allowed at times to get a radio from their stations, but we don't have general radio contact.
See, Ms. Hahn, I would, I would look into the fact, communication, they don't have a weapon to protect themselves. They got basically tear gas, OC spray, and handcuffs. But if you get a combative individual, and if they're dumping hazardous materials, hazardous chemicals, which could create major problems, not just dumping wood or some kind of a scrap, they should have the ability, like our Rexon Parks and like our General Services, to tap into the police frequency. And I think that when they're doing that, since they are enforcing the law, they're coordinating with Department of Transportation, that's basically our parking enforcement, since they are making arrests, they should have the ability to connect with the LAPD dispatch if they need to get assistance, need to get help, because they're really out there with people who sometimes may be combative. And if they are dumping hazardous chemicals, hazardous materials, there's very serious fines, some of them federal violations. So, I think for the safety of the employees, we should look into the LAPD ability for them to tap into the LAPD communications, as UCLA can do that, CSUN, they have the ability to use their own frequency, but in the event of an urgency emergency, they can tap in to the LAPD frequency and go directly to dispatch and get assistance quickly. Because I know if you go through the 9/11 line, it takes forever, and if you go through DOT, then they have to make a call down to LAPD. And sometimes there's precious time involved, and I'm concerned about the safety. You don't have a weapon, you got OC, that is something. You don't have any tasers?
No.
So, I mean, they're really, since they're making arrests, not just writing a ticket, we take someone into custody, and they want to resist, they're not really, I don't think, equipped to handle all that. Mr. Labange, you want to answer that?
Just a question. You're a reserve officer with the LAPD. What if they, when they are doing this, and is it seven days a week, did they do this?
Yes.
Could they go to the division that they work in, borrow a Motorola, a radio, and report to the...
Well, I don't know why they couldn't, or if they couldn't be distributed. The department's in the process of purchasing the radios, but there should be something to enhance their safety.
How many, how many street inspectors do we have at any given time?
We have a total of 45. Working in the field on this type of work would be 20 at a given time.
20 at a time.
So, they team up, there's two?
Yes.
So, 10 radios would be sufficient. They could rotate those around. I think that it would be advantageous if we would move forward, ask the department if they could do that. And it's very basic training, how you tap into whatever you work in southeast, southwest, Harbor.
I move this, as a part of this ordinance that we vote on today, that we also ask LAPD to provide...
I wouldn't say ask, I would direct LAPD.
I would direct.
LAPD to assign 10 radios to this particular detail for the safety of the personnel, and then to also include that, the training, how to use those particular radios. Again, it's for their safety.
I agree. Good call, Dennis.
Okay.
Okay, keep up the good work. I heard 1,100 arrests?
Yes.
That's a lot, that's a lot of people. And have there been any altercations, any incidents where people have resisted?
There have been some minor altercations. The worst, we had an investigator have his wrist and thumb broken in an altercation, but fortunately, they've been very few.
I bet if you were out there, they wouldn't resist.
Well...
Now, the truth is, you too, Ms. Hahn.
No, the truth is, Mr. President, when they have trouble, they say if we can't handle it, we're going to call it Officer Zine, and then they all know, back off.
A little Officer Zine and his motorcycle go there and help you, but in the meantime, you want to make sure you say, or Mr. Smith with his Glock 45 caliber.
Yeah, no shooting. Let's not shoot.
Okay.
Here's a question I just want to ask. This is a very important ordinance, a question at my time here. There are also industrial waste inspectors for the Bureau of Sanitation. Are they protected? Do we know? So, I asked the CLA, let's move forward this.
Yeah, let's move forward.
Is there anybody we're missing? Because when you mentioned the illegal dumping, I know in my district, next to the CS, Central Service Yard of Wrenckin Parks, is this industrial waste inspectors for the City of Los Angeles. I want to make sure they're the same protected, because they sometimes go into businesses that are illegally dumping into the waste stream. So, Mr. Miller, if you would, check to make sure the industrial waste inspectors, there's anybody, but go forward with this, go fast, go hard, charge, and empower the Public Works inspectors to do the great job that they do. Thank you.
Add that on to this, about the radios?
Yes.
Okay. We'll accept that it's friendly amendment, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's not friendly, it's...
It's firm.
Firm. It's a firm amendment.
Affirm and friendly amendment.
Correct.
Let's go ahead and open the roll, as amended. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That ordinance is approved on the first reading. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 17. That was being held on the desk for an amendment, and that has been distributed.
Okay. Anybody wish just to speak on 17? Seeing none, let's go ahead, as amended. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 19 called special by Councilmember Mesar.
Okay, let's hold that on the desk right now, and go to the next one.
30 was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, we'll take up item 30. Arnold Sachs on item 30, please. And without objection, let's send number 17 forthwith, please.
Arnold Sachs, yeah, I'm only concerned, actually, I had pulled, there was four or five items here, all lease agreements, put together by the General Services Department, one with the LA Mall, one with the City Hall East, one with the Watts Center, and even one for the LAPD. And I'm concerned, I've been before the city council regarding other lease agreements, the one at the airport with administrative taxi services for the snack wagon, and I'm also concerned, lease agreements with the franchise agreements that were established for the oil pipelines. Thank you for your attention, I appreciate it. Yet, what I'm interested in knowing is, why doesn't the General Services Department handle the different leases? Why is, when the bids for the pipeline franchises were brought about, it was acceptance of bids in the City of Los Angeles, there's no department accepting the bids. Why isn't the General Services...
Mr. President, it doesn't appear that he's speaking to this lease agreement for Julianos at City Hall East?
All right, if we could focus on that.
I am speaking to the responsibilities of the General Services Department as a whole. If they're responsible for all these different leases, for all these different departments, why then are they not responsible for the leases at the airport? Why then are they not responsible for the pipeline leases, the franchise leases, and the things of that nature? Why don't you answer that, Mr. City Attorney? Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. That'll close our public comments on this item. If we can please open the roll on this item, number 30. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
31 called special for cards from the public.
Okay, item 31 is next. Mr. Sachs, if item 31, would you like to address that, or, I know you said you were talking about a number of these together?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Close the public hearing on that. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is 33, and that was also called special for cards.
Okay, and also, Mr. Sachs waved his card on that one, or spoke to it earlier. We can go ahead, close the public hearing, and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 35 called special for cards from the public.
All right. 35 is before us, so, Mr. Sachs. On the Board of Harvard Commissioners' action.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs, this one I'm concerned about with the language that's involved here. It states in the agenda item, "An agreement with CH2M Hill Incorporated." Is that a, what is CHM2 to CH2M Hill? Is that a subsidiary? Who exactly is getting the agreement? The language that we're involved in on this agenda item, I'd just like to point out that when the Bureau of Public Works had an item on their agenda, it was requesting a contract, a personal, a three-year personal service contract with Waste Management of California Incorporated, doing business at Simi Valley Landfill and Recycling Center. That is not the item, but the language, again, what is, who is, who exactly is the communication from the board of directors to? Could you please explain that? CH2M Hill or CHM2? They seem to be different.
Good catch, Mr. Sachs. We will correct that in a second. In the parenthesis, it is mistyped, it is CH2M.
I'd appreciate, is that an amendment that will be made to correct that, or just a correction?
I've just made it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. As amended, if we can go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is 36, that was called special for cards, and Mr. Zine also called that special.
Mr. Zine, would you like to hear from the public first, or would you like to speak first?
Public's fine.
Okay. So, our first card is Phyllis Doherty.
Phyllis.
Who's been very patient. And then Mr. Sachs will follow.
Thank you. Phyllis Doherty with the Animal Issues Movement, and this was predictable that there would be problems with the animal shelters, and it's pathetic that after $154 million, the taxpayers' money has been spent, many of our animals would find better, more adequate shelter in the streets than they're finding in these shelters. The problem with this is that we had lots of oversight. We had citizen oversight committee, and we had an oversight committee for the mayor's office and all of the various legislative offices, CAO's offices, and we still have this chaos and absolute disaster in the way the money was spent. The oversight doesn't seem to be working, and I'm hoping in all these new oversight committees that are going to be created, that this is going to be corrected, that there needs to be oversight at the time that there's an announcement of the way these funds are going to be spent, not after they've been spent. And there needs to be a method that is ongoing, where there can be regular audits at regular intervals, because once the building is completed, and once the design is completed, once everything is purchased for it, it's too late to go back and correct it. We have complained to the council. Councilman Padilla offered to put me on that oversight committee, but unfortunately, I didn't want my name on this, exactly for this reason. I hope when we come to you and we tell you that things are wrong in the way these projects are going, that you listen to it and you do include a method by which all of these bond measures can be audited at intervals before the money is spent. When it is proposed to be spent by the department, you should be able to check on it at that time.
Thank you, Phyllis. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker? We have one minute left, I believe.
On this item, I'm very curious to know, there was recently an article in the newspaper regarding the sale of the contractor who's doing a police, a new police station. Tudor Salador was sold to Perini Brothers, and it seems that the CEO of Tudor Salada is on the board of Perini's Brothers, and I want to know that there's some checks and balances in the, I know that the cost overruns for the police department new headquarters is outrageous. Thank you for your time and your...
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. That will close our public comment on this item. Mr. Zine, do you want to...
That's what the motion is.
Be recognized at this point?
Right. Okay. Mr. Cardenas is inquiring about this audit that the controller will be doing on Prop F. I want to acknowledge the animal rights community for bringing this to my attention. Initially, we had animal shelters that were built with bond money, and we had some rain, and the rain was going the wrong way. Instead of exiting, it was going in, and the people were then having to put plastic sheeting over these brand-new facilities to protect the animals. So, we looked into it and found out that there were some concerns, some issues, some problems. I discussed it with our controller, so what we're doing now is asking that a formal audit be conducted on the Proposition F facilities. There's no question that when the libraries were built, they were built under budget, and we ended up having extra money to enhance the library system. When it come to the, came to this particular issue of the animal shelters, it was a far cry from what we expected, brand-new facilities that don't have the proper protection for animals when we have inclement weather. So, what this audit will do is go into that aspect, the money, how it was spent, what was done, what has to be retrofitted, and the controller will do an in-depth audit into the dollars that were spent on animals, animal shelters throughout the City of Los Angeles. There's still another shelter to be built in Mr. Parks's district. We want to make sure that that is state-of-the-art, and we don't have similar problems as we've encountered with other shelters. It was stated in committee when this was brought up that they copied a Pasadena model, and I don't know if it rains in LA, but not in Pasadena, but I would think that they would have shelter for the animals in inclement weather, and also in the valley when it gets the intense heat, that they would have shade. But anyway, this audit's going to reveal problems and issues and hopefully resolve them, so when Mr. Parks's shelter goes online during the construction phase, we won't encounter the same situation. So, that's what this audit's about. Again, I want to acknowledge Phyllis for being here, Phyllis Doherty, and also the animal rights folks that brought this to my attention, and we encourage them, when they find things are wrong with animal services, to bring it to our attention, and we will continue to explore and to remedy the problems that exist within that department that seem to be more than other departments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, I'm reading the motion, and I want to make sure that when we give the controller the $200,000 to do the audit, that, I'm trying to see the specifics of the motion to see if it reminds that this is an audit by the auditing standards, et cetera, because the controller's office has, in fact, done specific audits within those delineated responsibilities. She's also done reports, et cetera, et cetera. But whenever we get, we get reports that are outside of the, the specific standards of auditing, it seems to cause a lot of headaches and doesn't answer all the questions that we've been looking to have answered. So, the maker of the motion, Councilmember Zine, I do agree that we need to make sure that these are audited. It was $154 million that was approved by the voters. We should make sure that we double-check and see if it was all spent appropriately, but I just want to make sure that when we do give the controller that responsibility and forward those funds, as it says right here, "The cost to conduct an audit of this type is approximately $200,000." There's a big difference between a report and a big difference between an audit, and I just want to make sure that this is an audit by the auditing standards, so that when they do contract with somebody, we pay them for exactly what we expect, and that is an official audit, not just a report.
She's very concerned about this aspect of the Prop F money also, but I will follow up with the controller on that particular matter.
Yeah, if you could confirm that the language in which they're going to use to hire someone, who they pick is their business. That's under her purview, but just to make sure that they're actually paying for someone to do an official audit and not just a report.
Correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have that item now before us. If we can please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item thirty-seven calls special for cards from the public.
Okay. Item thirty-seven. We'll go out to Van Nuys. Sharon Brewer, Vr. Speaker.
Sharon Brewer, item number thirty-seven, special event fee waivers. You have seven total, five with amounts. Total is $43,383. One reimburse, one no amount. For one of them, from CD-11, it's May 25th, it's $5,580. Thirty-second, annual Brentwood, 5K, 10K. The sponsors is W2 Promotions, California Pizza Kitchen, DWP Green, L.A., Brentwood Town in the country, Forerunners. It's from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The proceeds benefit Brentwood Green Magnet School and Westside Family YMCA. I have with all those sponsors why they need to take and ask for a fee waiver. For item number C is on May 17th to the 18th, $6,543. St. John Baptist de la Sale. Another one that is kind of under the wire is May 3rd to the 4th, $1,260. The 19th Annual Pacific, something or another. What the council file is saying is going to cost more than that. The other one that concerns me is CD-3 on May 17th to the 18th to reimburse. An event that's right by me, closing of Lindley. Last year, they asked for a $15,000 fee waiver. Again, you have to stop doing the fee waivers. Having a total of $43,383 is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog. Is Mr. Dog in the house? I do not see him, so we will go ahead and pass on that one, and I will close our general comment on that item. If we can please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item thirty-nine calls special for cards from the public.
Mr. Sax has already, I think, reached your limit. I'm sorry, Mr. Sax. So, if you'd like to pass anything on, we'd be happy to hear that. Daniel Wiseman is also... We reached our limit already, sir. I'm sorry. So... And then, Daniel Wiseman. We do one-minute increments, so we're very straightforward with the rules, and we've communicated them very well with you. Mr. Wiseman, is he around? If not, we will close public comment. I'm sorry, Mr. Sax. Please open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item forty, calls special for cards from the public.
Okay. Matt Dowd, is he here? Michael Hunt? Do not see him. Sharon Brewer in San Fernando Valley.
Hi. Sharon Brewer on item number forty, a motion relative to declaring Hollywood Walk of Fame Star Installation Ceremonies as special events. Declare all Hollywood Chamber of Commerce Star Installation Ceremonies for the Hollywood Walk of Fame from May 21st, 2002 to the present, as well as all future Star Installation Ceremonies for a period of two years from the date of the adoption of the motion as special events. Instruct the Los Angeles Fire Department to waive all fees, costs, and requirements except insurance. According to the motion, they're required to go and have a fire inspector there. My question is, why isn't there a dollar amount attached to this? The fiscal impact, and that you're going all the way back to 2002, that basically it's a... What the cost is to the city to take and do this? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will be our last public speaker on that item. If we can please open the roll on item forty. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item forty-three calls special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay. And there was a public speaker card, but I do not see Mr. Dog here, so Ms. Hahn. Item forty-three.
Oh, thank you. Is this me? Thank you. I... This is just following our, so far, I think, very valuable tradition. Actually, it's not a... I don't know if we can call it a tradition. We've only been doing it this year. But taking one day and really thoroughly exploring issues, problems, and hopefully solutions to some of the city's challenges. This is going to be a special meeting to discuss our budget and, most importantly, our revenue opportunities. I think this is an opportunity for all the ideas that have been floating around there, everything from oil tax to... Got a suggestion in now about a DUI processing fee that we can impose on people that we arrest for DUIs. I mean, things that other cities do to collect revenue. I feel like there's a lot of revenue out there that we just haven't tapped into because we haven't explored it, we haven't studied it, and we haven't decided to adopt it as a policy in the city of Los Angeles. This would be a good day for all those ideas, and if we get them in early, I believe Councilmember Parks is wanting us to get our ideas in by Friday, so that CLA, CAO staff can begin researching our great ideas to see whether or not they will work, what it would take to make them work. For instance, I know my oil tax would take a vote of the people. So, let's have them tell us each idea, how much money that would generate, and whether or not that is something we can implement this year, next year, long-term. Because I know we've got this year's budget to deal with. We're already projecting a $300 million shortfall next year, $300, $400 million. Cherry's going higher. Shortfall next year. But you know, I think some of this is about the long-term. One-time fixes are not good. One-time fixes to solve budget problems aren't really the way for this policy decision-making body to, I think, move forward long-term. Let's look at some long-term ways to increase the revenue in the city of Los Angeles. Certainly, we're all for belt tightening. We're all for cutting waste and fraud and abuse in this city, but at some point, let's look at how we can raise revenue in a way that will sustain us long-term. So, that's what this day is about. Think about the ideas that you've... Many of us are involved with organizations, independent cities, contract cities, league of cities. You know, look at what some of our surrounding municipalities are doing to raise revenue, and let's just take a day and study it and look at it. Let's have a, you know, a list of the ideas and how much money they can generate and whether or not this is something we want to implement. So, I think it'll be a very interesting day, but let's use this day to explore a lot of these good ideas.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. We have Mr. Zine and then Mr. Labange.
Ms. Hahn, I support that idea, but I'd also like to add to that ways that we can save in addition to the addition, revenue sources that we haven't tapped into that we could, but other ideas where we talked about consolidation of some departments, but we can also balance that, ways that we can save dollars in addition to finding sources that we haven't tapped into. So, I'd like to have a friendly amendment to expand it out for both sides of the coin. You like that, Mr. Labange?
I know it's part of the...
That's what we do every day, Dennis.
No, it's not what we do every day. You just voted for a water and power increase.
Yeah, to build the infrastructure of the city.
I know, but... Let's go in the backyard. Anyway, if we can just have that...
We'll work on it.
Because there are some ideas that we can balance for both sides. I agree with what you're saying, but the other side of the coin, maybe there's something we can do on the other side off. Some ideas.
The public expects us to be cutting. I do think that's something we've been doing on a regular basis. We've all been asked to cut our office budgets. We've always been looking at ways to cut, which is absolutely a part of this. I agree with you. But I do think we need to take a systematic look at possible ways to increase revenue that we've never looked at before.
You're right.
How about we'll do this? We'll move the motion that is on revenue, because I know you wanted to be focused on that day. We'll make sure we have a cuts one as well that comes forward through the budget process. I know that's happening in about three weeks, so we'll make sure that that's the first piece, and I'll talk to Mr. Parks about coordinating that into it. Okay?
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Labange.
No, thank you, Ms. Hahn, for this very good idea and focus on this idea, especially when there's accidents in the city where a truck will turn a right corner and knock over a power pole, and all of a sudden, a cost to the city may be $7,000, $8,000, $10,000 to replace that pole. How do we capture that back? I would like to just say, because I wanted to say it now, because I don't know if I'll remember it then, breaking the city down regionally to focus on that so that you tell managers, "Who's the deputy city engineer of the valley?" Make sure they're focused on that. Who is the commander of one of the 20 police stations? That they're focused on that, that it just isn't we shift the paper and it just kind of gets corrected. That we focus on that to try to recover the cost when there's an accident, when there's a problem, when there's a challenge. Because all of a sudden, you do it. We just recently initiated a task force between the Police, Fire, and L.A. Unified, because you know the horrific crime when a synagogue, mosque, or a church is attacked? There's a federal task force that goes on. Believe it or not, someone drove by two weekends in a row and 22 times put out windows at a high school, at 3939 Tracy Street in Los Angeles, and all they did is fill out a form and got the windows replaced. We created this working group to focus on that so that they would try to catch and stop the problem that's there, not just react to, but hey, they knocked out a light post. They're not... Who knocked it down and go out and pick it up? Who shot out the windows? Go out and go after them to abate the problem. So, I wanted to compliment you on the ideas. The longer I speak, the more you get irritated, so I'll stop.
She loves you. You had her at hello, is what she said for the record. All right. Let's go ahead and open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item forty-five calls special for cards.
Okay. Ms. Brewer, item number forty-five, out in Van Nuys.
Yes, thank you. Item number forty-five, it just is a motion relative to funding to support the El Grito Celebration. My concern, again, this ends up, I guess, being a special event, is the transfer of $75,000 from the General City Purposes Fund to the Department of General Services. So, my biggest comment is just, is this just another, you know, special event that there might be a large fee waiver for? And if it is, again, events are good, but I see in there you're trying to find monetary donations and things like that. So, do what you can to cut down the fee waivers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer, and we certainly will. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll for the El Grito Celebration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
I said it wrong.
Ten ayes.
It's okay. That is approved. And next item, please.
Next item's forty-seven, and that also had a card.
Is Matt Dowd back? I do not see him in the audience, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on item forty-seven. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused May 9th and May 30th, both for city business, and a motion is required on both.
That takes us down to eleven on each day, or ten?
On eleven.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move that. Ms. Gruehl, seconds without objection. Those excuses are granted.
And that clears the desk.
Announcements, folks? Business nature? Any business announcements? Okay? Any adjourning motions? Okay. If I could ask everybody, please, in council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with great sadness, and I know Tom joins me on this. We went to the services yesterday for a very special individual who was a firefighter here in Los Angeles. Thomas Dowling, Thomas Francis Dowling, was... Passed away on March 28th, 2008. He was born in Lauraville, Iowa on June 15th, 1954, and passed away after a six-year battle with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. He moved to Los Angeles with his family of eight children in March of 1965, and graduated from Eagle Rock High School in 1972. He attended Glendale Junior College and was pursuing an engineering degree from San Jose State University when he was hired by the Los Angeles City Fire Department in 1977. He is... Will always be well-known as an individual who was an outstanding leader who led by example, motivated those around him, and welcomed any challenge. He was promoted to the rank of Apparatus Operator in 1984, Captain 1 in '88, and Captain 2 in 1993. He was best known for his common-sense approach to the application of his daily duties. He was never flustered, overwhelmed, or intimidated by the task, project, or mission that he was assigned. Superior offers always welcome Tom's arrival at emergency incidents and training sessions, and additionally, it was common practice for these same officers to seek Tom's counsel and wisdom on a number of issues. Tom's demonstrated work ethic, coupled with his personality, smile, and demeanor earned him the reputation of a fireman's fireman, the one all of us would want to have wanted and welcomed as our first responder in time of need. He... We heard several stories on Monday night at his memorial service, where they all came and stood up and talked about him and about the fact that he would go to garage sales and pick things up off the street. He could have helped us with the dumping, I think, Ms. Hahn, and would take it home and make something of it, and was just a jovial individual who was fiercely loyal, dedicated, became a close friend of mine, was willing to take risks, and was someone who believed in people. And his family, I know, is just devastated by this loss in the fire department because he was an extraordinary individual and a family man. He survived by his wife, Betty. He married her in 1985. They have four children, Sarah, 20, Kevin, 19, Eric, 17, and Joey, 14. He's also survived by his fire service family, his brother-in-law, Apparatus Operator, Ed Tapia, who is currently assigned to Fire Station 87 in Granada Hills. And, you know, he was someone that not only did his job, but was very active in the Firemen's Relief Association, helping firefighters, widows, orphans, and family members during their greatest time of need, and was instrumental in starting the annual Hope for Firefighters charity event in downtown that many of us have had the opportunity to attend. But he was more than just a firefighter to me. He was a very good friend, and so he will be missed, and our thoughts and prayers go to his family who are suffering this loss. But he had six years of suffering and almost spent the last year in the hospital, and was out only for a few weeks, and so I know that he is no longer suffering, but we will all remember him as a kind and loyal individual and a great firefighter for the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Labange.
Yeah, thank you for being there for all of us, and I was able to go after our council business yesterday, and it was a beautiful mass. It was celebrated, and Chief Berry spoke about the fire department family, which is so important, after the mass. And as he left the church, they walked to the family home, which is right across from St. Francis High School, where his sons go to school. He was a firefighter's firefighter and a great leader, and a tragic loss for his family of four children, but also, he was one of eight children, and it was the first family member to be called at this time. Thomas Dowling was a great individual, and he'll be sorely missed by his family, his coworkers, and the people of Los Angeles who he served.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Ms. Hahn.
I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of Carlos Rivera, who was a longshoreman who was killed last Thursday while working at the Port of Long Beach. Carlos was 73. He was known as Tycoon, and he was born in Puerto Rico on November 8th, 1934. Carlos became a longshoreman in 1969 and obviously loved working on the waterfront all these years. He was a proud member of Local 13, of the International Longshore and Warehouse Union. He survived by his wife of 51 years, Juana Rivera, daughter Daniel, Carlos Jr., Roy, Virginia Bevel, 16 grandchildren, and 10 great-grandchildren. I think this always highlights how dangerous the work is out on those docks, and this was certainly a tragedy even for someone who'd worked there his whole life. It's still a very, very dangerous place to work, but we thank him for his years of service on the docks. Also, would like us to adjourn in the memory of Larry Gray, who passed away on March 30th, 2008. He was only 58. He grew up in Redondo Beach. He was a 1967 graduate of Redondo High School, where he was named All CIF in baseball his senior year. He continued his baseball career at Cal Poly Pomona, and then he worked for the U.S. Postal Service in Redondo Beach for 34 years, retiring in 2006. He survived by his parents, Jake and Margaret Gray, brother Steve Gray, and his wife Annette, niece Jenna, nephews Dane and Chance Gray, and several aunts and uncles. Larry was my neighbor for many years in San Pedro. We'll miss him.
Thank you. Are there adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? We will next be in session this Friday, the 11th of April, here in John Farrow Council Chambers. We want to thank our viewers and for Jerry Miller. Congratulations on winning the office.